Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, Smith Vocational Agricultural High School. Today is Tuesday, March 26th. May I have my call to work, please?
Mr. Kaling?
Present.
Mr. Quadro, I imagine will be here shortly. Dr. Spencer Robinson, here. Mayor Ciara, here. Dr. Bonner, here.
Can we have permission statement?
You don't want the pledge?
Is that what, no, or?
Oh, it's up to you.
I can do it.
Want to?
Sure.
Okay.
Permission statement, Smith Vocational Agricultural High School is to prepare students-
I thought you meant you'd say the pledge.
Oh, I do, we do-
Do you usually start with the pledge?
Well, I was looking at here in the, you're right, it's outboard, so I can do it. Everybody stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our command, in the name of our government, our justice, and our citizens. Thank you. Thank you.
Smith Vocational Agricultural High School, the mission of Smith Vocational Agricultural High School is to prepare students for social responsibility, employment, and post-secondary education through rigorous applied technical and academic programs.
Thank you. Is there a participation by the public this evening?
I'm just here for the meeting.
Oh.
Participation by the trustees?
We'll get to the building part of the meeting at some point, committee reports. Yeah, I do have a little something. And I mentioned this to Joe at the advisory dinner. Pig roast, how about we have a real pig roast?
As per?
As per roasting a pig.
Okay.
I'm just throwing it out there. I think they used to do that in the past, I'm not sure about it.
The way past?
The way past. I think the sign's a little misleading, it says pig roast, and people, I think some people, I know I did at first, when it first came to it, was expecting a real pig roast, as opposed to it being served from the cafeteria kitchen. That's like two cents worth.
Okay, duly noted. I did want to make a report that out of the St. Patrick's Day parade, our float from Smith Vocational turned on, became a third place winner in one of the categories, and I'm very proud of the students because it's handmade float, by the direction of the two instructors. But there was a lot of hard work and sweat equity that went into this, and I was glad to see them get rewarded by getting an award and bringing it back. And from the reports that I got from James and Mark, that they were so excited, the students, that they're ready to do it next year. Normally we alternate, but we'll see what happens. So I just wanted to share that. At this time, may I have a motion, a second to approve the minutes of the February 20th, 24th Board of Trustees meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Additional discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain, just as I remember.
At this time, we're gonna have these probably-
Yeah, so we're gonna introduce Mr. Bianca, the principal, who was given the opportunity to review with the board of the recent NEAC visit that we had last week, so, Joe?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to go through and take the opportunity tonight. So one of the things that you have that I did distribute was the school's self-reflection report. And I can share that with Debbie electronically, because there are hyperlinks that are in it that'll bring you to specific documents and other things that we did prepare for the visiting committee. So, go through, and I just want to highlight a few things. First off, the process that we use really began back in December of 2022, and in that we formed our self-reflection committees. So, staff were asked to give us their input on which committee they wanted to sit on. There's five standards in NEASC, and what we chose to do, and everybody sort of has your, they have their best practices or guidelines, but each school has the opportunity to form their process how they want to do it. So we first formed a steering committee, and I want to thank the members of that steering committee. I co-chaired it with Rebecca Wanzig. Vocational representative was Joe Brewer. Academic representative was Shannon Brisboy. The other vocational representative was Melanie Shardier, our CTE director, and the other academic representative was Mike Parks, our director of academics. So that was the main steering committee, and Dr. Lincoln Hoker was as a consultant on and off that committee as we went through the process. So what we decided to do is to look at those five standards, and we formed five vocational committees and five academic committees. We felt, we felt that at first it was very important for us to have each side of the house view those standards through their own lens, so that they could sort of talk with their colleagues within vocational, or talk with their colleagues within academic, and look at the overall campus, look at the standards, and come to a conclusion as to how they viewed, how the school's doing, the students, the instruction. And then what we ultimately did is those committees came together, and they did a crosswalk together, they talked about the different types of evidence and things that they had gathered. Then ultimately, as a steering committee, we used all that input, they used Google Docs, they identified where they thought things were red, yellow, or green was the color scheme that we gave it, green meaning that we're doing really well, yellow was maybe we could be doing better, or they couldn't find a lot of evidence, red was these are areas that we feel we should be looking at, or we should have more. Yes?
Sorry to interrupt you, I might have missed this. So the standards are the DASI standards, or they're NEASC?
NEASC has their own standards, yeah.
Okay. And how many were, are there-
There's five standards for accreditation.
So they say these are the five standards that we're going to measure your school with?
Yes, so they look at-
And then the two different committees, they, they each looked at all the five standards, looking for evidence to support or not, each other five standards?
So we had a vocational standard that looked at leadership, and an academic committee that looked at leadership. We had a vocational committee that looked at, like, resources and student supports, and then we had the academic looked at those same things with resources, student support. We had a vocational that looked at facilities, we had an academic that looked at facilities.
So same five standards, two different committees. Were they, like, when you say resources and facilities, did the vocational committee stick to the shops and the academic committee stick to the classroom space, or did they both do the whole campus?
They both did the whole campus, but we didn't, we left it up to them to look at the standards. So within the standards, there's principles. Those principles have, like, identifier language that they're gonna use to help guide their investigation. So we didn't want to give a lot of top-down, how they had to look at it, we wanted to be able to form the committee and allow them to look at it through their lens, however they saw fit. So they looked at, based on those, those principles, which are really like prompts. They're looking at both their classroom space and the overall campus. So they're going, they're going big, they're going small, and then back to big, or micro, macro, micro. So there's kind of this ebb and flow as they're looking at the standards. And the same thing happens whether they're looking at curriculum and assessment, it's you're looking at big global things, like templates and, and where is it all located, all the way down to what are you actually doing within your subject matter. So it's, it kind of ebbs and flows.
Were all of the academic departments surveyed, and all of the shops, or were-
So, the five academic committees would have been made up of everyone from different departments, so they opted in. So if somebody said, I really want to focus on the leadership strand, standard, others might have said, well, I want to volunteer and focus on curriculum assessment. On that curriculum assessment, it wasn't just English teachers, or it wasn't just plumbers. It would have been amalgamation of everybody who wanted to go in, so it very much was across the standards. We also had a pair of professionals join one of these, and we ran these as PLCs. So they were run with a facilitator, and that was their focus. So that's what we did.
Everything is self-selected? Is that what I'm hearing you say, or to a great extent?
To a great extent, it was self-selected, but if we had 15 people that signed up for one committee and three that signed up for the other, we tried to find balance. We also looked at it because it, as you go through NEASC, you can start to see that some of the standards are a little heavier than others. So, and the ones that we knew were heavier, they may have had a committee of 12, and one of the ones that might have been lighter had a committee of five or seven.
Yeah.
Right? So that way they could balance out the workload of what they're investigating and what kind of documentation and evidence they're gathering.
Were you doing the leadership of all of this, sort of, like, because you're having to back, make all these adjustments, right? Were you doing that yourself, or was that you with the steering committee?
So that, that would be the steering committee. Yep.
That's a lot more.
So, they were, and each of them were assigned as liaisons, so they were coming in and out of the steering committee, out to the smaller committees, and then coming back. So as the smaller committees were meeting, the steering committee was meeting, and we were generally looking at things that they were gonna be doing, so that we could have the activity set up or the questions set up, and we were reviewing what they already did. And I can get more into that. So if you look at this, like, specifically, what did we do? December, January, we had the faculty go through the portrait, or vision of the graduate protocol. So NEASC calls it vision of the graduate, other people call it portrait of a graduate. So we went through and we did that protocol. Now, the steering committee was trained on that protocol in April of '22. So then we formed, well, what will these activities look like? We pretty much mimicked the smaller, a more pared-down version of the training we went through, so that the staff would go through that. So they went through and they did that in those two. The principal's youth advisory, I also ran the students through that same protocol, so they went through the same experience. To help inform that, we did surveys out to parents, students, staff, and we surveyed our program advisories. So they all had input based back up to us on what the vision of the graduate should be. As we went through January to June, that's when they were actually doing a lot of their work, that's when they were investigating, answering questions, going to different contacts within the district. So you might have been on the leadership committee, but you may not know all the policies and protocols. So they were reaching out, people were assigned different things, gathering that information. What we began to do is, again, we gave them the documents, so all this was through Google Drive, so a lot of this were live documents that we could see as it was going on. We had everything set up, Mike Parks, our curriculum, our director of academics did most of the template creation for us. But we could see all that stuff, so they were going back, they were unpacking these standards, and they were filling, starting to fill in and answer questions and identifying evidence. So a lot of that evidence was hyperlink that we could see in real time while we were meeting and see the work that they were doing. Aside from just physically going to their meetings with our liaisons, we could actually see it in virtual world, looking, just in going into Google and seeing, seeing it as it came. So that's what they worked on through June. While they were working on all that, the steering committee was taking all that information out of the vision of the graduate, they were compiling it, paring it down, and starting to form it into actual narrative and language. And that's what we were doing, which eventually then went out to the staff for vote, which passed. And then while they were gathering all that evidence, we started packaging up what they were doing. So when we got back in September, the steering committee, what we did is we released all the teachers back to start, we were sort of weaving in two different professional development things. So the beginning of this year, they were going back in, and they were looking at something we had done five, six years ago, which was our curriculum crosswalk for ninth and 10th grade. We wanted to re-familiarize them, and with turnover on what that was, they then went on to curriculum walk 11th and 12th grade. So what that is, is all the academics are putting together all the curriculum, sharing it with the vocational teachers, so they can see what's happening and what they can embed as part of embedded academics, which is a requirement in chapter 74. So while they're doing that, we're taking all the different standards and we're starting to form those reports, which we did, and then through September to January, all that stuff got gathered up, got written, got voted on, and then you can go to the next slide. So what did we actually share with the team? So what we gathered, when the team came, we first shared with them a lot of quick facts about Smith Vocational, about the community, about the catchment area, about the programs that we have here. We created the standard reports, each of the 15 shops created a program narrative, there's a template you get from NEASC, so they did all that. We compiled all the different reports that they asked and requested evidence. What we did is we formed Google folders that they could just go in and see, plus you have to upload certain things right into the NEASC portal, they have an electronic portal. Some of the other things that we highlighted, because NEASC really comes every 10 years, and vocational, which I wasn't used to, they may come every two, every five, they're here, they've been coming through a lot more than when I was at a non-vocational high school, which would have really just been the 10 years. But in vocational world, there's sometimes a two-year follow-up and then a five-year mid-cycle, and they come in with a smaller team-
Why?
And they go through. I think it's, they're looking at safety, they're looking at facilities, they're looking at outcomes. So that's just how they did it on the CTE side. We highlighted some of the staff changes, positives, negatives, and substantive changes over the last 10 years. What did the actual visit look like? It, it looked like us as a steering committee welcoming that team, it was a team of, it ended up being eight members, it was supposed to be nine, one wasn't able to make it, but eight individuals, and they were teachers, two principals that came, and they went through and looked at, at everything. We had, the two principals were both from Connecticut, they were CTE principals, and then we had an animal science representative and a carpentry representative. The other five members were various academics. What we then did is we had them tour the campus, we all know this is quite a campus to walk around and get used to, so we had four students that toured them around, I just wanted to highlight them, Jayana Daniels, senior, Chris Alexander, junior, Josie Dubay, senior, Dominic Sanchez, sophomore, and Dominic's one of our student reps. But they did an amazing job, they were like the hit of the, hit of the, of the day, of course. But they brought them all around and were able to do all that. That was followed by the team going in and visiting classes. Now, when you have six, seven team members going through classrooms, I had to create a two-day schedule for them. But they were going in for about 10 to 15 minutes in all these different classrooms, they pretty much saw every single classroom on campus, so they worked with, through every space in an hour and a half. They then conducted a series of interviews. They, some of them were split into groups, some of them were like two halves, and some were just all together. So who did they interview? They interviewed five administrators, six department heads, six teachers, 17 students, eight representatives, which are really, you know, they're faculty still, and the school nurse. They interviewed Dr. Lincoln Hoker and Ms. Fairman, they interviewed six parents, and then they really delved in and looked at all the different documents and policies that we supplied them with, as well as evidence and examples of student work. And then they did a steering committee debrief exit meeting, and this was Tuesday and Wednesday of last week. So what are the vision of the graduate, I just want to share this with the, this is something that eventually will replace the mission statement that gets read at our meetings, this becomes sort of the new mission statement, the vision of the graduate, and that's, "Smith Vocational Agricultural High School graduates are confident, diverse individuals who are professional and self-aware. They work to positively impact their industry and community through inspirational team-focused leadership, effective communication, and moral decision-making." So at the end of the day, what do we want a Smith Vocational graduate to be? That's really what that, that protocol comes. And when, in talking with our parents, students, staff, and industry partners, this is, these are the adjectives that dominated the responses that we got, so we then formed them into a narrative. Now, when you see this, it will get packaged, it actually gets broken down into three different sections around communicator, around professional, and around community member. And so we have additional language for that, too, and then that'll get, we're gonna work with graphics to come up with, you know, a visual depiction of what that is. Yes?
Can you say a little bit more about the, I am hearing what you're, how you're describing the process, not knowing the protocol, and I never was a high school teacher, so I never went through the NEASC accreditation process. When I see a vision of the graduate or a portrait of a graduate, I think of all of the district's community stakeholders contributing to that. So this seems really educator-driven, and the educated in terms of the students, and I'd like, you know, I'm thinking, we, of course, we have parents and families and community members, and obviously industry representatives, so I'm wondering if you could say a little bit more about their contribution, like the outsiders of Smith Book contributors to the crafting of the vision of graduate statement?
The outsiders that we did were employers, were colleges, were members of the advisory, that's who we went to.
And so were they surveyed or interviewed, or?
They were surveyed.
Surveilled?
Yep.
Okay, do you know how many, or how many responses there were?
I don't have that, no, but I can get it for you.
Okay.
Yep.
Just curious, because I do feel like it's important for them to contribute. No objection to all of the educator work and phenomenal, what a process.
So, next thing that we're asked to do is really to look at the standards and present back what we think are strengths. This is what came out of those committees as highlighted as strengths. So this is what we, we shared. So you can see the language is kind of around us taking both the standard of NEASC and melding it with some examples of what we're doing here at Smith Vocational. So standard one is about leadership, so they're talking about, that's any type of leadership, that's just not administrators. So you can see that it really would highlight some, some key things that came out of the committees and from, oh, and the other thing is, I failed to mention, with NEASC, you have to do, they have a created survey, that's specifically their survey, that goes to parents, students, and staff. So all that information was gathered, and that was part of, of all the evidence that we used to look at all that. So here's some examples of things we do, if you want to go to the next. So standard two, we're talking here about the student learning experience, we're talking about assessment curriculum.
Will we get copies of this, because this is-
You have, you have the packet. You have the entire self-reflection, yep.
It's phenomenal to see all that evidence, yeah. Just summarized, so, in a way that's so easy to digest.
And, and this is just summarizing, in there you'll see the larger write-up.
Yeah.
And this is about student support, so library and guidance and other ones, that's standard four. Standard five is about your facilities. One of the things that I do want to highlight, so what we're waiting on now is we are gonna get back a preliminary report. Reports look different now. So it used to be that you got this giant written report, it would take you so much time to read through it, and then you'd have to, you'd have time to rebut, except a rebut a lot of the things that are said. Right now, what we're getting is a bulleted response, and they're looking at only the language in the NEASC standards. So that's what they're gonna focus on, they're gonna say, you have hit the following language, we feel you need to work on the following language. So it's kind of how they're breaking it down. What I will say around the facilities, only because we all know about Smith Book, we all know about the facilities, how old they are, and the amount of time that it takes, and all the hard work with the custodians and students to really improve and maintain the facilities. They really kind of looked at it as, hey, the facilities are what they are, which is different than the experience we've gotten with NEASC 10 years. I think they've kind of resigned themselves to saying it is what it is. What they really want to focus more on is, what are we doing to ensure that the facilities are safe and maintained? As opposed to what they used to be focused on was, what are you doing to get new facilities? So I think there's been a shift kind of above us, I think with a lot of arguments that we've made, that the board's made, that Dr. Lincoln Hoker's made, he talks about it being like the Fenway Park, and we're sitting here trying, we're not gonna tear it down and rebuild necessarily, because we may not be able to, but we're gonna do everything we can to modernize it. And that's, that's kind of what we're focused on.
How do you feel about that shift in there, emphasis, are you happy about it?
Yes, yeah. I think it's more pragmatic at this point. Does it mean that they're taking off, or that we should take off a goal of trying to replace the facilities? No. But I think it's pragmatic in the sense that, and realistic, that that's what is in our control, so focus on what's in your control right now. What did we identify as priority areas? So one of the things you have to come out is priority areas, and then we are expected over the next two years to draft a growth plan focused on the NEASC priority areas. Eventually, they would get woven into our school improvement plan, our district plan also. So what are we looking at? Well, one of the things is, when you create a new vision statement, right, the, when we create that new vision of the graduate, that's different than what we have had. And, and one of the things that we really need to do is drive that down into all of our decision-making. If we say that that's, and the industry members say that's what they believe in, and that's what we believe in, then we really got to make sure that that exists. So things like Believe It or Not, when it talks about, like I said before, we break it down into three different categories around professionalism, communication, and others, it's saying, you really drill it down, you say, okay, as a communicator, to be that effective communicator, moral-driven communicator, it's, what are we doing then with the resources we're buying? What are we doing in plumbing, and electrical, and agmech, and English, and history? What activities are we doing that are cultivating communication? So really, I like the idea of it, I think it's pretty empowering, is trying to push that down to the books that we're buying, the things that we're doing, the activities that we're doing, and saying, if that's what we say students are supposed to do when they leave here after four years, then what are we doing to train them to do that by the time they leave? So I do like that. So you'll see a lot of it focuses in on that. We, we felt that we do a good job here, we really didn't list it because we felt that we're failing. It was kind of one of those things with the staff, that everybody was in agreement that we can always do better, and we should focus to do better.
The English language.
Yeah, ELO and 504s and special needs, that we should, we should always be focused on improving what we can do for those groups. So it was kind of one of those things where we feel like we're doing good, but there's such an important group of students that we don't want to sit here and say, we got it, we got that. So I think, I, I felt good hearing from the staff and others that this is an area that we want to say, let's, let's keep that as a focus of what we're driving for. And then standard five, obviously, it's, we felt that we really got to focus on making sure that our buildings, our facilities can deliver the high-quality curriculum for our programs. And if there's any other questions? So it was a year and a half long process, it was a lot of effort by the staff, very proud of what they were able to do, and, you know, we are where we're at now, we'll take the, the response from NEASC, and we'll form our plans moving out.
What does ELC stand for, Joe? Did you mention that?
Yeah, it's Professional Learning Community, so you really think of it as colleague working groups.
Got it, Jim.
Out of curiosity-
Yes.
Who were the two principals from the CTE from Connecticut? In case I need to put a word in for you all?
Richard Schellmann, I don't know if you know him. I think I may have a gentleman's name, but I'll get it for you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Shushu.
Joe, would you pass on to your team-
Who's the other one?
Shushu.
The-
Shuhan?
Shuhan, Shushan, they didn't come, I think he was the cabal check.
Would you pass on to the team what a great job they did here?
Absolutely.
And I know, being around, there's been years they have with NEASC, and some of the stuff in the past as compared to the future, this is light years ahead of what we used to do in regards to getting them to recognize, you know, like our cover page says 1908, and here we are. And somebody asked me today about, you know, here at the table, there in our construction meeting, that what would Oliver Smith think about the school and the building and everything we're doing? And I said, he'd be proud of us, you know, we've come a long way. And the kind of work that's being done here, acad- And the kind of work that's being done here academically, as far as instructors, as far as keeping the campus up to snub the best we can, can't work any harder. Please thank him.
I will, absolutely, thank you.
Joe, just to help, so I know there were a lot of questions coming from Dr. over there on the other side of the table. So the reflection report, this report will list the standards out for you?
Yeah, great.
Which is a good, it's a good read. So if you have time, it will at least give you a sense of the principles in which we'll fall under each of the standards.
Great, thank you. I've asked you this before and I want to ask you now, that you're just on the other side of this process, the value of going through it on a scale of one to 10, what would you say and why? To your professional perspective only?
I don't know if I feel, I don't know if I could, I feel that I can rate it from one to 10 or not.
Okay, so let's speak to Joe.
I think that, I think that any process that makes a school and staff reflect on what they're doing and have to look at themselves as if they're outsiders and then open yourself up to critical feedback from colleagues. So you have people, we knew, we knew a lot of them, the ones from Massachusetts. So to kind of sit there and say, okay, well, we're going to allow you now to give us feedback and judge us, I think is very healthy. I think if we get defensive and close ourselves off to that kind of a thing, there's going to be a lot of takeaways that we're going to miss. It doesn't mean that we're going to accept everything they say because we have our own idiosyncrasies, we have our own issues or problems or habits and policies and protocols and a lot of times, those are grown out of real things, like they exist for a reason. But it's, it's always a good process. And I think from our perspective, you know, we've boiled that process in because we do academic and vocational cycle reviews. So every single program and shop goes through review every five years internally. They're on a schedule, so whether it's English and math or whether it's ag mech and carpentry, they go through that, so we've built that into it, so. I, I do think it's valuable, very valuable.
You talked about the curriculum class swap, grade nine to 10 and 11 to 12. And those are great opportunities for professional collaboration. Did you, this year and a half process and to be continued, that must have really fostered same kind of collaboration, those relationships, would you say like a community building kind of work or?
Yeah, I think it always has that effect, yeah. All right, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Greatly prepared package here, Joe. And the school and community summary, quickly stand over that. And the information here is priceless in a sense in how it's, you're so dynamic and not taking a static approach to anything and always looking to improve. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item we have, there's no student reps tonight, correct?
Correct. I do want to announce that Reyna Diaz did resign and I do have replacement Phoebe Perez and she'll be at the next meeting.
Great, awesome.
What's up?
Supreme Tenor.
She's from electrical.
Good evening, everybody.
Could I offer a comment from Peanut Gallery? Hell of a lot different than when I graduated from Smithville in 1957. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So good evening, everybody. I'm going to ask that, talking to the chair prior to, you know, we are not in a position to formally go on the budget this year, this evening. So what I'm hoping to do is go through the traditional Supreme Tenor report, I'll then go into the budget presentation, have any discussions or any questions by our means. So sort of pulling two reports into one is what I'm going to do. So the more traditional Supreme Tenor report under instructional leadership. Just a few highlights, are a part of a Mass Hire Clean Energy sector presentation a few weeks ago and now there's a follow-up meeting to come in the next couple of weeks. The idea behind this, I think the state, under the new state administration is looking at this void in clean energy, whether it's solar or whatnot, and what can the state do to invest in that particular industry? And they're typically looking at vocational schools, whether it's chapter 74 programs, i.e. electrical is one example, or through the adult ed programs in the evening, how do we train the adults in the community to do some of these jobs that aren't even created yet? So just letting the board know, you know, there's some conversations. I know Mass Hire, Hampden County Mass Hire, as a reminder, we are in Hampshire County. We sort of align with the Franklin, Hampshire County Mass Hire, but Hampden County Mass Hire is the one driving this, I think we've been at the two tables, so more to come. I want to thank Ms. Wozick. Prior to the NAAC visit, we had the DESI team out here with the tiered focus monitoring review. So similar concept, that the state comes in, they have certain regulations and expectations. It's more special ed focused around policy and whatnot, many interviews. So that occurred in early March. So again, thank you to Ms. Wozick for that leadership to make sure that that happens. I always love, on March 6, we had our annual mock interview day. Unfortunately, Mother Nature was not a big supporter of us this year. This was the third we scheduled, but we were finally able to have the mock interviews.
Do we have a copy of this?
Yes, you do.
All right, sorry, I can't find it. Let me keep looking, sorry. There's one more along. Many papers.
We have a lot of papers.
So this year I had the opportunity to fill in as an interviewer or culinary and inclusion pair and I followed up with the culinary instructors afterwards. I was highly impressed by most of the students. They were prepared, they came with a resume, they answered every single question with personal examples. They asked me questions, which was great. Not too many students will ask questions at the end, I think that's a big home run when it comes to interviewing schools. So again, I applaud Max Wyter and the guidance team organizing the mock interviews. Again, the weather never really helped us out, but it was a great, great morning.
Were there enough interviewers?
Yes.
About what proportion were outside of the school?
Oh, the vast majority. I don't think there was too many school personnel there.
Fantastic, great, because that really adds to the value of the experience.
Right. On March 15, and I won't steal the thunder from Dr. Spencer Robinson, but we did have our latest policy subcommittee meeting and we continued to review the library materials policy and we started to get into longevity and what that would look like potentially here, so again, I'll leave the details to you. Again, thank you to Mr. Biaka and his leadership in organizing and making sure that the NAAC renovation visit went as smoothly as possible. From my standpoint, just a couple of observations, everything that the board said is true. You know, the steering committee, Mr. Biaka did a great job. I think the staff did a wonderful job with all of the committee work. You know, my former life, like Mr. Biaka, having the traditional high school experience, it has changed. So back then, it was truly the visiting team would show up on a Sunday. There would be a very large dog and pony show happening on that Sunday. Then they were in the school Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday that they left. This year, they showed up Tuesday morning and left Wednesday, so it was truly a forty-hour experience. So that was scaled back. And the other change, Mr. Biaka was talking about the five standards. That's consistent, you know, no matter the type of high school. The only difference was, and Joe alluded to it, the shop-specific reviews. So every single chapter 74 program had their own reports. And I think that goes back to what Mr. Biaka was talking about. Those follow-up visits really focusing on the safety and the operation of every single program. So that was some additional work that, you know, we had to do that a traditional high school may not have to. But otherwise, overall, I think it was a good experience. I think the feedback that we're going to get will be very positive for the school moving forward. And then lastly, another highlight, and we enter the spring season, it's sort of the unofficial kickoff to all different kinds of events and activities. It's always nice to attend the Health Technology CNA ceremony. So the students, these are juniors in the Health Technology program. They have finally finished the CNA curriculum, that particular program. They have not sat yet for the exam, but you know, past, past practice, past history tells us that they are very successful and interested in the exam. So it's nice to see them, you know, make it that far. Under management and operations, on the 21st of March, the city capital improvement plan hearing occurred. I was luckily, I was able to sit at home and watch it on Zoom. I was highly impressed, honestly, with just how the whole meeting ran. I want to thank the mayor, I think it went really well.
Thank you for being there.
Nothing official?
Thank you for being there, appreciate it.
Mr. Smith was going to have all the answers, but we avoided any questions. So we're just waiting for official word, but hopefully we'll see some news coming out to support the school. Speaking of obviously major issues that we have.
Can I ask, how does that process work?
So typically in the fall, each department is asked to submit projects that they want to have supported through the capital improvement plan. Is that multi-year?
How, how, how do you know how much money is available?
We don't know.
Okay, so do you have a ballpark number that you try to, so it could be from $10 to $10,000?
No, no, this is stipulation. So as far as NPS or some vocational numbers, these particular projects, as long as they're under $150,000, they can be applied to net school spending, which makes it easier for the city side.
Right.
So typically, the projects that we're looking at submitting are capped at $150,000.
And they also have to be above $10,000 and they need to either extend the length of something for ten years or something that the volume capital needs to have is a ten-year period.
And we can submit, we could submit as many as we wanted to?
So there's a five-year plan?
It's a five-year annually recurring plan. So it's every year, the plan shifts a year. And so you plan out for five years and then every year you look and say, we ask the departments to prioritize, what are your top priorities? And then you rank them and then you look at what can be available funds and some of those things move and shift and some of those things come on that weren't expected. Is that what we have forward?
From all departments?
Yes.
And how is this funded?
It is funded from many sources. So it's funded from stabilization, from undisputed fund balance, from our capital stabilization that we've been building for years. It's funded by grants sometimes. It's, it's available online if you want to take a look at it and you can see all the funding sources and where it's from.
Is there consideration given to like equity in terms of distribution among the department? Like if all these different departments are saying, "This is a top priority for me", who decides that these department's top priorities get the funding in these dumps?
So there's a committee that consists of a city councilor, someone from the planning board, a North Hampton homeschool school committee member, and three members of the public. And so they, that's who the superintendent was saying, well, not that's...
We present that in fall, we present.
That's in the fall. They, each department presents to that committee. And then they make recommendations to me and then the finance director and I sit down and we step around and try and figure out how many things that we could possibly fund. And then it's a very collaborative process. So we're often going back to the departments and saying, you know, what, can you tell me more about this? Can we push this a little? Is this, this looks actually like maybe it's a higher priority than what you indicated. So it's a very, it's a months-long process.
Awesome, I understand, thank you. Well, one last question, how is the maximum, how is the maximum amount of fund determined? So if there's all these, is it totally dependent, it's like these sources, however much that?
It's available funding, yes, so it depends.
So it's those identified sources of funding, whatever those numbers are, whatever they are to, that's a total?
And bar some sometimes, it's part of that. And it also includes all the DPW, but those are from the enterprise funds. It's all those funds and then all the identified sources that we have been building these reserves and we, we try and very carefully use them each year and not use too much so that we maintain the ability to fund capital projects every year.
So it sounds, it's kind of like a fungible process.
It's, yeah.
I understand. Lot of, lot of moving parts.
It's a lot of moving parts and the finance director did a remarkable job of piecing it all together and trying to figure out how, how we can fund the maximum amount of projects possible. And so central, like the bulk of the projects come from central services, but it'll be central services for the schools, central services for the different departments, for the building.
Right, right. So then, how do you determine what, what requests are going to be made to the?
So we talked with our internal team here, with the administrative team, keeping an eye on what we're projecting out. As the mayor said, sometimes priorities that we set last year for this year, they change. Prime example, even within the year, things change. So what we were presenting in the fall, it changed from what was presented at the city council. And I thank the mayor for that flexibility.
So what did we present?
So I, when we were talking about the horticulture building, what I said, when I asked about the generator and the electrical panel, he picked up what I was putting down and then those ended up making it on the capital program.
Along with a multifunction bus, along with, I actually got that.
And I don't know how many years the bus had been on the program.
Correct, that's one. Our storage buildings, you see along the pasture, some roof repair needs there. The Apple Storage Building that we had some work done over the last couple of years. Residing that particular building, de-building our infamous roof issue to try to secure that roof.
Is that less than $150,000?
Yes.
Really?
That is not redone, is it?
It's just repaired.
It's just buried, is it?
Okay.
And as the mayor said, the generator and the electrical panel for the new construction. So those are the items that we've, we submitted.
Thank you so much. And what do we, are we going to get them all funded?
I don't know yet.
So that the city council will have their frill of the next.
Okay.
So we'll pay attention to that.
Fingers and toes are crossed, yes.
Thank you, that's very illuminating. I did not understand how that process worked.
And again, thank you very much. It's a great process.
Julie May, one thing that's nice is when we're awarded, the city finance director, Charlie, will reach out to us and say, "Okay, these funds you can use now" or "These funds you can begin using July 1." So at least we can start preparing.
Thank you.
So moving on to the horticulture building, just a few updates. One is, as the board knows, we've agreed to accept the 1.2 million from the EEA. I just want to have a brief conversation with the board. Through conversations with the EEA and the assistant secretary and the representative from DCR kind of overseeing all of this, there was a proposal that was given to me really last minute, to be honest. This notion of having a demonstration harvest at our demonstration forest. So the concept would be, through the bidding process, we would hire a general contractor who would then oversee hiring a professional harvester to do a harvest of some of our trees up at the forest as an educational opportunity for our students, obviously. We would then take those trees and we would send them off for processing and obviously the students would be exposed to see that whole process happen. And then at the end of the day, we would obviously have some lumber that we could then use with the horticulture building. The request was that finished lumber we would use in the building. If we had any excess lumber, we would use it in cabin making and/or carpentry. And if we still had excess lumber, the state would take it and use it elsewhere. So I think it's a great idea, in theory. In addition to this, they wanted us to create a three-part educational video series.
A video, I'd like to say.
A series.
Who proposed it?
The folks from EEA.
Okay.
That's one of the stipulations.
So they said, they said, "We would like to see this as part of..." Like, is it a requirement?
What?
So... They were, part of the package was us producing a three-part educational video series that we could educate within the industry. There was going to be a requirement, once the project was done, we were going to submit for this national award program that they're familiar with. We were going to then open up the building for, in open house, for a professional architect association to come through and look at using local products, what it could look like. And I think that was about it. So this all happened actually on the day, the same day as the career fair. And there was a million and one emails and then schedules and people are already being invited and it was a lot very quickly. And I had some initial concerns. So I spoke with our SMMA team and they shared the same concerns. The concern is multifaceted. One was, we are already at the 12th hour to get this project out to bid and build this project. This potentially could delay that whole process. The concern is, as a school, you know, we have scheduling and how do we make this work within the school to make it truly educationally?
Viable.
I don't know how that would happen.
Meaningful, yeah.
Cost, so we would be responsible to hire this, you know, the harvester, you know, what would that cost be? I got to be bold in that. I think their vision was, yes, we would be responsible to pay for that professional harvester. However, if we're harvesting our own lumber, maybe the savings on the materials, since it's our material, we're not going to buy it at retail. So maybe there'd be a cost savings that would cover the cost of harvest. Okay, that's a vision, I don't know if that would be real or not. So I talked to the SMMA team and we actually all agreed on a rebala, which I'm getting to. But I told the representatives from EEA, I said, "I cannot make the decision, okay? Within my lane, I don't have that authority. The board has the authority for such a project." And we had a meeting this evening. So I said, "Chances are, somebody at the board will have a question. What happens if the board says, 'No, we don't want to have a large-scale demonstration up at the demonstration forest, we don't want to cut down as many trees.'" We don't want to cut down as many trees. What happens if we say, no, we're not ready for this? Would we lose the money? And the response was, no, we would not lose the money. The 1.2 million is still allocated to the school. Obviously, the trade-off is, we just simply have to buy the lumber rather than producing it. So I shared that with the board, that, you know, my recommendation is that we don't necessarily go down this path right now. SMMA's response, and I really liked it, and we talked about it with the building committee earlier today, is that we acknowledge that there may be, hopefully, a second phase to this building project. As you all remember, we scaled back the building project, we cut out the additional classroom, cut out the headhouse, and cut out the new greenhouse. And the hope is, someday, if we find that money tree, we can finish that building project, and then we can demo what we have as an existing structure. I've already had the conversations with EEA, I think I shared it with the board, that there's a potential opportunity to talk about a conservation restriction of this same property. And it would be a financial transaction that would occur to apply that restriction to the property. That money could be used to hopefully, you know, finish this project. During that phase, this would make a lot of sense during that phase. If we're going to apply a conservation restriction to that forest, perhaps we do the demonstration harvest, and we can use some of that, our lumber in that addition. So I think we're all on the same page with the SMMA team, myself, I shared that with the building committee. There's definitely support within the building committee, to be totally transparent. I think people saw the value, and, you know, this is a great opportunity. But we also realize that we need to go out to bid next Tuesday, and it's just, it's way too big of a conversation. So I shared that with the board. I would recommend that we, you know, I tell EEA, thank you, it's a great idea, but let's pause after the next phase. So that's part of that EEA conversation that's been happening. I just want to make a note, it is on your agenda later this evening. There's a letter that SMMA has drafted outlining some proprietary requests. I will talk about that letter in detail, and I can answer any questions when we get to that agenda. But that's, part of that letter is as a byproduct, as a result of the EEA 1.2 million. So we'll get to that after a little while. Some other updates in regards to the building project. On March 6, we had to sit in front of the state plumbing board for a variance. We were asked for one less staff bathroom, and we were able to get that variance granted. So then that one saves on some of the design and construction costs, so that was some good news. On March 14, I came back from a Mava meeting. I went with Helen, with Rachel from.
Hertzier Design.
Hertzier Design, thank you. And with Greg Wilver, our OPM. We sat in front of the North Hampton Planning Board, and we had the site plan approved, which is great news as well, so it's another hurdle we've gotten over. As I already mentioned, we had a building committee meeting earlier today. Great news. Really, the best news is the next bullet. We received the 75% CD estimate, it came back late last night. The estimate right now is at 5.9 million that you see there. When you include the soft costs, which is approximately 1.2 million, we are still within budget. And by say budget, that's what we have available revenue sources, plus the 1.2 million of the state. So we are in very good shape as far as moving forward. And that estimate includes, as you can see in the slide, the full radiant floor heat system. So a few months ago, we were talking about, we don't have enough money for the radiant floor heat, but since we have to pour a slab anyways, you know, the flooring, let's put the plumbing into the concrete, and down the road, we can complete the system. We felt the radiant floor heat was worthwhile, we wanted to get that into the estimate. And this estimate includes the fire system. So when the building is complete, we will have operating radiant floor heating.
So it's supposed to be that in this?
Yes. So, any questions on the building project? Again, I'm sure we'll get to the committee, if we can talk more about it, necessarily.
Yeah, we, um.
You're breathing some sighs of relief.
Yes.
Yeah, he's sleeping at night.
There's other stuff going on, but, you know, we'll get through this case.
Nature of the beast.
So family and community engagement. I just want to, I can quickly highlight the March newsletter that went out. The main focus this month, from my perspective, was on IRCs, industry-recognized credentials. I think this is a move that is very, very important when it comes to chapter 74 programs. And we're talking about the vision of the graduate, you know, what do our graduates have when they go out to the real world. Tangentially, our students are walking away with certificates that hopefully would save employers money for training, and is giving skill sets and sort of the leg up for the, for the students who enter the workforce with these certifications. So I talked about the value of that, from the school perspective, the student perspective, but also the employer perspective. And I want to thank Mr. Biaq for his input and various highlights. If you haven't noticed, I just see here Scott Kider from the community. He was recognized in a wonderful article in, I think, Business West. And he's on our advisory, he was actually the executive sponsor for the recent R5. He gives a lot back to the community, he's a great asset to the school, so. See what else, and a few other typical highlights for the newsletter.
Such a great communication tool.
Yes, thank you. So Senator Comerford, I want to take a moment and talk a little bit about this. So back in February, late February, Dr. Spencer Robinson and I had a follow-up meeting with Senator Comerford. I say a follow, we had an initial meeting. He's not there. The notion is, and we all know, de-building, we need to address de-building at some point. I would say sooner than later. And if we don't address de-building, that's going to create other decisions that have to be made by the board, which I'll get into probably with the budget discussion. But we know, funding a new building is very complicated anyways, and it's more complicated when we have our governance, and it's sort of intertwined. So I do thank Dr. Spencer Robinson for creating these initial meetings with the senator. The senator's been great as far as big picture, kind of looking, yeah, pointing us in different directions. I'm not sure what the solution is, okay? I have ideas, and we've talked about this in our vision work as a board. But I do just pose it to the board that at some point, you know, right now, honestly, the horticulture building is my top priority. That's what I'm living and breathing right now, and obviously, a budget and just operating a school. But big picture, we cannot avoid the discussion of what we do with de-building. Whether that is governance, structure change, whether that is how do we fund it, you know, working with the city, or whether it's, we can't tackle that, you know, we have to make some other decisions with the board. What I'm alluding to is programming, and, you know, just how do we, how do we, long-term, how can we make our budget sustainable long-term? And we're hitting, I call, I told the faculty, many districts are having the fiscal cliff, okay? You open up the newspaper any day, and you see, you know, another school district's going over that fiscal cliff. I think what we're facing right now is not necessarily a fiscal cliff, we'll talk about this in the budget, it's more of a fiscal wall, okay? We just can't go any more unless something drastic changes. So that conversation ties back to de-building, and it ties back to the budget. So again, I want to thank Dr. Spencer Robinson for some of the initial work. But I do think we're at a crossroads where, I think we both agree that it needs to be a full board discussion and the next step. So I'll just share that to share. Just a side note, not side note, but late February, I was invited to the subcommittee work for the TMC, Amanda TMC, which is the Tournament of Management Committee for the State By Athletic Association. And I don't want to get into the weeds here, but it's an opportunity for me to advocate for vocational schools in general. And the issue at hand is, the state realigns the schools in each of the sports on a periodic basis. Typically based on enrollment, that's how you are aligned to a certain division. Division one schools are the big schools, division five schools are the smaller schools. But there's an opportunity, when a school is aligned into a new division, there is an appeal process. So if schools feel like, you know, we've been assigned to division three, but there's no way we can compete in division three, and we have rational reasons why, we can try to appeal to go down. The problem with the appeals is it's very subjective. And it's, the vocational schools specifically, we were sort of harmed with this new model. So to have a vocational voice within the subcommittee, I think, is very important for us. And I'm talking about participation rates. You heard from Mr. Leroux about a month ago, about our co-op numbers. This is a great thing, our co-op numbers are going through the roof. But when our co-op numbers go up, we are apt to lose some students who may not want to come back to school to participate in athletics because they're on co-op. So even though our enrollment is going up, is our participational level as high? So we're talking about a lot of things. Again, not getting into the weeds, but it's just a great opportunity for us to have a seat at the table. I want to thank Mr. Clark, our new assistant principal. He's taken over the Students of the Month luncheon initiative. We had our first luncheon earlier this year, on March 1. It went really well. A chance to recognize several students for all of the hard work is always nice. And I want to thank the culinary program, they put down a great lunch for them, so that was nice. The R5, on March 6, I was hesitant, I'll be honest, on how this particular program would go here at the school, and last-minute planning. And I cannot say enough about this school. I think the planning and the organization, it happened, obviously, the food, and the students that were there serving the food. It was a great evening to really showcase the school. And I heard nothing but positive feedback from the chamber, so.
I could just touch on that. Claire Kelly, who was one of the key people that helped set that event up from the Chamber of Commerce, personally wrote notes to Andy, myself, and people that set everything up. She has never seen an event like that. And I want to comment on the gifts that were given away that night on the raffle from business cards that the carpentry department, my goodness, the awards, the gifts that were given away, people were just pulled over. And so we got a lot of high marks on that event. It worked our brand for the public PR, as well as, we had 125 people that attended that evening. So it was possibly 75 that never had seen or been inside Smith School. So I thought it was a great event, and just wanted to touch on that and let them know that the chamber was, really thought it was awesome, awesome.
Thank you. On March 7, the following morning, so our custodial staff having to set up the R5, tear it down, and be ready the next morning for the career fair, it was amazing. You see the photo that was on Facebook highlighting this. Just a side note from the career fair, there was two individuals representing their own companies. I actually grew up and went to high school with these two individuals. One of them, not to me directly, so there were not biased feedback, but spoke to the other individual who then spoke to me. This first individual was at a career fair for another school a few weeks prior to, and was blown away with our particular career fair. Much better organized, laid out, more employers, just talked about a top-notch event. So again, I want to thank the staff that participated, we got students through, the students were prepared, they were engaged, so another great opportunity for our students to get in front of reporters. Thank Mr. Biaq on the 8. We had Aspen Property Management here for a tour, and I participated in the lunch. But Aspen Property Management, they are owned by Harold Greenspoon. If that name rings a bell, he's at Almont Meadow. The Greenspoon Awards, the excellence in teaching, that, I know Spivak participates in, I'm assuming North Hampton participates in as well. So what they were looking for is, you know, trying to build this partnership with the school. Knowing that we have all these different trade areas, they are always looking for skilled labor, whether it's carpentry, or electrician, or plumbing, and whatnot. And how can we build that pipeline for future employees? I cannot reference how many rental properties they have in the Pioneer Valley, but it's a lot. So we'll see where that partnership goes.
Do you know if they already partnered with Putnam?
I do not know.
They have not, they would be the first.
That's interesting.
On the 15, I participated in the annual St. Patrick's Committee Breakfast. Wanted the mayor, great job.
Took a little ribbing.
Comes with the job.
Yeah, comes with the job.
That weekend, as Mr. Kaylin mentioned, the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Yes, our float did take third place in the open division. The photo that you see on the slide was sort of a work in progress. So congratulations to the horticulture students. In essence, they were building a scaled version of a log cabin, along with a few other components on the float to highlight the horticulture program. And as Mr. Kaylin said, typically, we alternate between the horticulture program and our criminal justice program. So next year, we'll see, but chances are it will be criminal justice next year.
Is there any other shop that wants to get one on the parade, or is there any other?
At this point, no. Program advisory dinner and meetings occurred last week. Again, I want to thank the culinary program, they put on one heck of a dinner. I want to thank Mr. Biaq and Mr. Leroux for a new addition to this particular program, trying to, again, combine the program advisory along with recognizing all of our co-op employers, many of which are advisory members. So we handed out our first-ever awards recognizing the co-op employers. Again, the vision is, you've probably seen this in various businesses, you'll see a plaque or whatever for a sponsorship or whatnot. It's just recognizing that particular employer as a co-op partnership with the school, and hopefully, that will expand as time goes on, so that was a great evening. And the meetings, I think, were great, they were well-attended. I haven't seen attendance that high in a long time, so that was great. The athletic trainer model, I just, again, I need to take a moment to get on my soapbox for a moment. And talking about the athletic trainer, I'm not sure if this has been a discussion at NPS. If it hasn't, probably should be. It has been, okay. Are you aware of that? For the full board, and if, mayor, if you know the history, I apologize, but I think the entire board needs to hear some of the history behind the athletic trainer. So years ago, a couple predecessors before you, mayor, had an issue with the hospital and sort of taxes or actor of, you know, what is this large employer doing for the city, or not doing for the city? So there were some conversations that occurred. And sort of the agreement that was made back then was that the hospital would cover the cost of an athletic trainer for North Hampton High. So, and that's how that began.
That's their payment in lieu of taxes?
In essence.
An athletic training.
So then, you know, fast forward, you know, Smith Vocational began to expand their athletic offerings. Initially, there were some partnerships between the two high schools. And then as we continued to expand, we really sort of raged away from North Hampton High and having our own very successful large athletic program. So the question then stood, we need an athletic trainer. So the hospital stepped up and had the same agreement. So the hospital was now covering the cost of two athletic trainers for the two districts. And that's been the agreement since we've been here. So back in December or so, about a week before Jeff Arnos retired from the hospital, he called for a meeting to sit down with myself and Anthony Chabelli from the hospital. And I brought my team together, and we talked, and thanked Jeff for all of his long work and partnership within the community. Wanted to let us know that Mass General has this large-scale athletic trainer model that they're trying to really push out within the region, and because Cooley Dickinson is part of Mass General. What's going to happen is Mass General is going to sort of take over the program. So the athletic trainer that we have would technically be an employee of Mass General. And, but nothing would, at the end user, our level, nothing would change. In essence, we'd have the same trainer, we'd have the same access to the services, nothing. But the contract itself would come from Mass General. And then Cooley Dickinson would create a conduit, call it a grant, call it whatever you want, and it would still continue to cover the cost of the athletic trainer. So that's what was agreed upon back in December. So, okay, it sounds great. I think the services and PD and support for our athletic trainer would expand because now there'd be more professional development offered by Mass General rather than just Cooley Dickinson, and there'd be no financial hit on us. Great. Fast forward a couple months, and I get a phone call from the hospital saying, well, what we talked about might not necessarily be true. We had a Zoom meeting with Mass General, they had a great presentation. I then get the contract for athletic training services, and it's not being totally covered anymore. What you see is basically a four-year phase out, is what Mass General wants to do. What they're recommending is actually not accurate in the contract, I have to push back on it. But the idea is, this first year, and the first year is this coming fiscal year, that the athletic trainer service would be fully covered. The second year, they cover 75%, third year, they cover 50%, and year four, we would have to inherit the entire cost, which is, what they're projecting is about $62,000 onto the athletic budget. So this is news to us, obviously, I say us, the administrative team. Not overly happy with how this is being played out. I just wanted to make sure NPS, you're aware of the same scenario.
We're still waiting for our contract.
No, you can look at it.
And a trainer is legally required, right? It is for specific sports, not all of the sports.
And it's got to be at the competition?
Yes.
And that's all, they don't have to be at practices, they're not there during the?
I admit, for certain sports, they do.
For certain sports, they're practices.
And they have to travel. You have to travel with your own.
Go to Williams.
So it's amazing that we can't get around sharing, okay?
Did Smith College ever provide? I remember an athletic trainer coming from Smith College. I remember an athletic trainer coming from Smith College.
Maybe that's where the trainer came from, but it was paid for through the health dollars.
Because they have, they have a sports medicine program, so maybe something to invest in.
It's here for what it's worth.
So, right now, we're, in four years, we're budgeting $62,000, $68,000 for an athletic trainer.
Unless things change.
Is it the same amount for NPS, or is it more because...
So, I'm waiting for our numbers, because we have a larger sports program, so it's going to be a little...
Proportionally bigger, yeah. So, it's based on that.
And the professional culture, I will go through this as quickly as possible. So, part of the board policy for the springtime is to announce any retirees that we know of for next year, and we are aware of two retirees, that's Mr. Brooks in Collision Repair, former student alum, he bleeds black and gold, so that's going to be a loss. And then, second of all, my right-hand person, my resident historian, your secretary, Ms. Carver's retired, so again, gigantic shoes to fill.
I want to say congratulations, except it's a loss for us. Congratulations. It's a big decision. A big transition.
Yeah, if you get bored, you can come back.
You can work for NPS.
Well-earned and well-deserved.
And lastly, the professional culture, I had the Boba Boarding Directors Meeting. That happened to be the meeting I left early to come back for the Plating Board Meeting. Personally happy that that was my last official meeting in my capacity as an officer. Just several updates, again, strong advocacy at the state level. I think the tide is beginning to turn politically around the lottery. Very hot topic. There seems to be a shift in thinking at the State House, so not quite sure how that's still going to play out, there's still no guarantees, but there are more people who are understanding that lottery isn't simply an easy-to-fix-for-all, you know, there has to be a deeper dive and deeper discussion, so that's really the biggest takeaway there. Donations, there were three in the past couple months. One's for cabinet-making, thank you to Wright Millworks, who donated a bunch of veneer plywood to be used in making some custom cabinets. Criminal Justice, thank you to the Northampton PD. They donated a 2018 Ford Intercept SUV to be used by our CJ students as they prepare for Skills USA, along with motor vehicle stop instruction. And lastly, within Collision Repair, thank you to Steve Prentze from West Springfield Auto Parts Authority, donating an upgraded digital mixing scale, a new computer, so our students can learn sort of the enhanced paint mixing process and how to use paint coat within the computer to end up with the finished product, the VU's.
Dr. Lincolnover, the admissions policy, maybe the state legislature makes me wonder, hoisting licenses, is there any update on that?
Thank you, yes. That was another update from the State House. Unfortunately, the two sides, the Senate and the House, the committee chairs are supposed to come out. Now, the hoisting license in both halves have positive feedback, it's looking good. The problem is, the two chairs have failed to meet yet. So, that particular...
To reconcile the language in the two bills?
To move forward. That's sort of being delayed, it's not being delayed because there's any anti-pushback on us, it's just more some political turmoil.
It's probably not a top priority for, they're working on some of the other things, trying to find the common language.
Not on the bill. I think there's, our understanding, there's more political personalities going on. In the news, this is, again, talking about skills this time of the season, there was just a nice 10 years ago update about how our students did so well at the skill competition. Looking ahead, just a few updates I want to, I'm looking forward to, actually, tomorrow evening, the Chapter 70 funding presentation put on by NASC, hosted by NPS and Dr. Bonner, so I'll be attending tomorrow night. Always learn things about the state funding formula, and how that works or what does not work. And then, in early April, we have a meeting with SMMA and representatives from the Department of Ed to sort of look at the Horticulture Building, making sure from the safety perspective that the safety officer from DESI has no questions, making sure we address all needs before we start building. Next week also, that same evening, Thursday night is the 4th, Friday the 5th is the annual Epic Face Day Convention. I do plan on going Thursday night to that dinner in the awards banquet. Last year, I went Friday morning for breakfast. I just put it out there with any trustees or planning attending, but you have an option either Thursday night or Friday morning.
I'm going.
Which one?
Thursday night.
Mr. Kalin and I were planning to go to the breakfast, or did you have to sign us up, or?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, thank you.
That Friday, that we were just talking about, there's the Policy Subcommittee Meeting. And then, that weekend, I will not be attending the actual conference, as I have in the past, but fortunately, we have a student being recognized yet again. We've been very fortunate with this particular conference. The Student of the Year for Mass ETE from Western Mass is Madison Gurrell. You can see the photo of her being recognized here at the school. She's in the CJ program. So, there's a conference during the day, that evening, there's an awards banquet, and last year, we sort of ran away with all of the awards.
It was almost embarrassing.
So, this year, we have the Student of the Year, and I do want to applaud Mass ETE. I think they made a wise decision this year. So, in the past, there was a statewide winner, and we were very fortunate to be the statewide winner in multiple categories. This year, they felt it was worthwhile. They have different regions within Mass ETE, so you have a Western Region, a Central Region, North-South. So, they were recognizing the Student of the Year from each region. So, Madison Gurrell is the Western Mass chapter representative, so that's great. So, we'll have more, but the point is, any chance to recognize more students, I think we're better off, to be honest. They are recognizing more students this year. And then, finally, April 9th, which is earlier than normal, is our next board meeting, and that is because of, again, the budget passing to the board. Speaking of, if I can just transition into the next fun topic, which is budget. People that you should have the power, slides in front of you. I am going to skip the first two-thirds of the presentation, you saw this last month. It's the same slides from the State of the School presentation, which is why I do that in February, to sort of give you the context. If during the discussion of questions, we can obviously go back to the questions about some of that data. I'm going to jump to Slide 25, Budget Overview. And again, where we stand right now, as we reminded for the process and timeline, it's sort of this process Joe and I started when we first came here to Smith. So, the building principal receives budget requests from all the department heads, academic and vocational. Typically, the deadline for that is Christmas break, December break. And then, that gives the month of January for Joe and Crystal and myself, and then depending if it's an academic or vocational department head, we'll have either the Director of Voc Ed or the Director of Academics sitting there as well. At times, depending on the request, we'll have Josh here, the Director of IT there, includes technology requests. So, basically, the month of January is filling into early February are these individual meetings with department heads who can begin to advocate for and justify the requests that they have within their individual departments. From early February until basically now, Joe and Crystal compile all of that into a general school-wide budget. We will then begin to add in individual administrative budgets, such as Mr. Smith and facilities and whatnot. We compile everything into one cohesive budget. We begin to then hope for a non-resident tuition rate to come from the state. We then, you know, wait with the city, working with the city on all of the net school spending figures, the Schedule 19 into our costs, all of those figures we have to add in, and then it's given to me for final approval, and we have to begin to fine-tune a budget if we're over budget. What you're going to look at in a moment is a budget that is still currently over budget, which is why I am not asking for a vote to see. If I did think it was in our best interest, and I think it was out of fairness to the board, I want you to see that, in a way, Smith Vocational is no different than many of the other districts in the area, okay? We are not as bad off as many other districts, and as I said earlier this evening, I do not see a fiscal cliff, I am seeing a fiscal wall. Talk about that, you know, through the discussion. I want the board to sort of see where we're at. I do applaud Joe and Crystal, they made some very difficult decisions already, because to the point we're at. I made a few decisions over the last 48 hours. I will look for input from all of you if you have priorities or focus areas or requests. But then, we're going to go back and we're going to continue to work on this budget, and we're going to come back on April 9th with a balanced budget. And I hold firm, it will be a balanced budget without going into tuition revolving. I still stand for my ask. As a board, you have the right to make that decision, but as a superintendent, I just don't think long-term, it makes sense to build a budget by dividend due savings account. That's not sustainable long-term. So, with that said, the first one, I sort of, again, I want to give credit to the mayor. I've heard the mayor's message over the last several years, and the mayor's concerns around net school spending and the local contribution versus the Chapter 70 from DESI, and that is no different when we're looking individually here at the school. So, net school spending you see on the right, okay, has increased just over 6% from the current fiscal year to what we're looking at for next year. Again, net school spending is the required minimum towards education, and that is comprised of Chapter 70, which is the money from the state, and the local contribution, so that balances that bucket, okay? So, the bucket is net school spending. You first put in your Chapter 70 money from the state, that balance to fill that bucket is what the state considers your local contribution. If you just look at this, it's very easy to see by the eye that the mayor is correct, okay? The state, over the last several years, has not increased Chapter 70 a whole lot. Specifically, this year, we are anticipating an increase of 0.38%. That's nothing. The local contribution from Northampton has to increase 7.84%, which again, is a heavy lift for the city.
That's determined by the state. And those are, it's hard for me to read, so those are the actual numbers. That graph represents, the histogram represents the actual numbers.
Set by the state, that's the requirement. Now, I do want to thank the city. Typically, the city has come in above net school spending, and that holds true this year as well, I'll talk about that in a little while.
Does the traditional word for the sub?
Maybe, that's the next one. Great segue.
So, when you say per pupil expenditure of local contribution, $26,000?
So, that simple, all I did, because I wanted to give the board a way of maybe measuring apples to apples as close as we can, okay? Because again, next slide, we're going to talk about the non-resident tuition rate, which is per student. You know, we talk about these numbers, but somebody may say, well, how much is that per Northampton student? So, I simply took the local contribution number, okay, divided that by our foundation enrollment that we had from last October 1, and did that math, and it came out to be $26,012.
The foundation enrollment, the total in the...
Foundation enrollment is the Northampton enrollment here, which drives all of this.
So, and what's it for pupils? What's it for pupils spending in NPS? Is it like $15,000?
Uh, just higher. That's higher than that. I don't know, it hasn't surpassed $18,000, so it's in the range between 16 and 18, I can't remember off the top.
So, the Northampton Smith Oak students cost, yes, is sitting much more. But that's true for vocational schools?
That's true for vocational schools, as well as charter and the tuition-out schools, they're actually receiving higher funding.
And with vocational schools, it's the cost of the equipment especially, like you're, because you're not buying textbooks, you're buying machines.
That could be a clause. That could be a clause for the additional tuition.
I mean, I know, looking at per pupil spending for vocational schools in Massachusetts compared to district schools in Massachusetts, it's always higher than vocational schools, setting aside charter schools.
So, you'll see the per pupil expenditure calculation I made, the $26,000, that's a 4.21% increase over the current fiscal year. And just a side note, if you can take a green snapshot of that Chapter 74 comparison, that flat line, okay, when we get later in the agenda, we'll talk about the Student Opportunity Act plan, okay, I will probably reference that flat line, the Chapter 70 money, but as a side note.
See it in my brain, don't worry.
This next slide, this is not official yet, but unofficially, we are probably going to be in a ballpark of the non-resident tuition rate being $20,847. Again, that is not an official number, it's a number that we're using for the budget. I think we're going to be very close, okay, once it becomes official from the state. That is a 3.84% increase from the current year. Obviously, last month, you heard that, you know, there's been a time in recent history where this number went down, and that was a fear of mine. So, that fear was not realized, it actually did go up a little bit. But again, as we reminded last month, our enrollment is beginning to hit that 600-student threshold, so we're not getting as big of an increase in dollars through the non-resident student program, because we have less new students, so we're going to begin the flat line, hence that wall that we're going to hit relatively soon.
Can any of the great minds here, in terms of this financial information, explain why the non-resident tuition rate has increased the way it has, but the Chapter 70 has not?
That's the thing about charter and...
Isn't it the same, you're looking at the same?
Right, the only counterargument, I'm not here to make a counterargument, but...
The cost of educating students.
The local contribution for Northampton per student is, again, approximately $26,000. It's actually higher because Northampton's going above the net school spending figure. That means there's a higher level of local contribution, okay? But that $26,000 compared to the $20,000, or $21,000, still means Northampton's paying more per student. So, we are, the school is receiving more money from the city of Northampton per student than where we receive per student outside of Northampton. However, transportation is on us.
We're paying for their transportation.
Right, so there's, it's difficult...
That includes capital improvement.
In capital, right.
And the sending districts are paying more transportation. And Northampton, so are Northampton students shouldering the capital cost for ad students?
Say that again.
Are the Northampton students shouldering the capital cost for all of this?
So, all those capital projects that we alluded to earlier this evening are being shouldered by the city of Northampton, in essence, it's the Northampton students.
We benefits, sorry, are benefits covered by the city side for the school?
Yes. Part in the direction.
And we could charge the out-of-district, we could assess, put a capital adjustment fee on the sending districts in enrollment.
Correct. Which I think is a conversation we need to have. So, this slide I share every year, this is looking at sort of the total, this $14 million that you see for FY '25, again, as clarification, is not what we call our unit's number, but this is sort of adding on all the directs and everything else. We're looking at sort of a grand total of approximately $14 million, just over $14 million. It's $520,000 more than this fiscal year, it's about a 3.86% increase in the budget.
And what's the student enrollment estimate?
It'd be just shy of $600,000. So, just some highlights, these next several slides are more just bulleted points, I just want the board to be aware of. So, the budget increase, as we just talked about, went up 3.86%. There was a survey that came out, it was shared with superintendents across the state, and the survey was asking, how are we doing with budgets? And where are people with the percent increases with the budgets? 93 districts reported, the average was a 5.10% increase in a school budget. The range went anywhere from 0.64% all the way up to 12.96%. Of the 93 districts, I pulled out the CTE schools that had responded, and their average was a 4.78%. So, I use this as a point of reference, you know, we're slightly below the average, it is what it is. I just share that with the board. The non-resident tuition rate, we already talked about, was going up unofficially 3.84%. When we're building the budget, and you do have a copy of the budget, the draft budget in front of you, but the, we are projecting, we are budgeting an additional eight students for non-residents. I just wanted to buy in this a little bit. As a reminder, we pay the transportation costs for our Northampton students. However, we can't have the transportation costs within the operating budget, so we have to use our non-resident tuition revolving account to cover the contract for the Northampton transportation. This fiscal year, unfortunately, we did not have, we did not budget enough students to then cover that transportation cost, so in essence, we actually dipped more into the tuition revolving account to cover that. So, we've talked about this over the last several years, where... So we've talked about this over the last several years, where we can't simply use the number of non-resident students that we anticipate being here as a budget number, because God forbid, we don't get as many students, then this budget that's been approved by the board and by city council, then it means the city is now under hook to pay all the bills, and that can't happen. So we have to be conservative when we're looking at projecting the number of non-resident students. This year, we were too progressive, we went too far, and we over budgeted, which meant we added more into the tuition revolving account to pay for transportation.
Excuse me, Andy, what is the cap on the Northampton students coming here? Is there...
The admissions policy says that we can accept 150 students, period. The first 30 are prioritized for the city of Northampton. So after the first 30, obviously, there's more Northampton applicants, they go into the larger pool, our review with all the non-residents. So we'll end up with more than 30 Northampton students, but there's guaranteed 30.
And so has the city on our side, have we ever put a cap in terms of how many students are coming from Northampton?
And that would be an issue if we didn't.
Oh, I know.
And I don't say that for me, that's just...
Yeah, this is Northampton.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wondered, was there a cap?
Not official. Now, if you begin to dive into the budget sheets, on the revenue side, you'll see that the transportation cost for this fiscal year to what we're budgeting is actually going down. So that's unheard of, okay, but there's a rational explanation. This current fiscal year, we had to have additional van transportation for some of our Northampton students, that is diminishing, so we can avoid some of the costs there, which is why you see the decrease in the transportation costs within a budget.
When you say additional van transportation, that students with special needs that have a rating to that increase?
Correct. Yep. Now, back to the projection, and we're budgeting plus eight students, non-resident students. If you look at our enrollment projections, so that four-year trend, you know, I could argue that we can anticipate an additional 17 non-resident students next year. So potentially, we might be looking at 17 additional, we're budgeting an additional eight. That gives us that buffer of nine, which is not a lot, okay? Years ago, we had a bigger buffer. So my point is, to balance a budget, we all know you balance a budget by increasing your revenue or decreasing your expenses. There's not much more we can do to increase our revenue to make this budget work. Again, I just want to sort of outline net school spending very quickly, again, very upper-level, basic understanding of net school spending. So again, it's your state money, which is chapter 70, you add it to your local contribution from the city, and that equals the net school spending, which is dictated by the state. So that's the basic one. Chapter 70, this year, we're getting 934,000 from the state. That means our net school spending figure is just over 4 million, so again, that gap, that difference is what the city has to come up with at a minimum. What is in the budget for the local contribution is a 3.7 million. That includes, Dr. Bonner was alluding to it, all the indirect costs to the city, so health insurance and so on and so forth, a portion of the mayor's salary, HR payroll, things like that, there's many different things that go into the indirect costs. Plus additional contributions that just above and beyond. So again, thank you to the mayor for what he promised to the schools and then to continue to increase. So, you know, we realize that in additional funds through the local contribution, along with some of the capital projects that have been funded or have been approved by the city level. Because these projects are approved at lower than $150,000 per project, the city can cap them towards extraordinary maintenance when it comes to any year before it's back to the Department of Defense. So it's great, I just say this, just to say it, thank you, we need these capital projects to be funded, there's no way we can sustain this campus without the projects. But the flip side is, as we fund projects, that then means there's less money in the operating budget, okay? It's a seesaw balancing act, if that makes sense. On top of all of that, though, there's about a quarter of a million dollars on top of all of this that are additional, potentially additional capital projects. So again, I want to thank the mayor, the division, and truly the promise to the schools, both the school districts. So thank you. That is not reflected in these budget figures. Indirect costs, I just want to highlight this, we've talked about health insurance in recent meetings, the employer side of the health insurance is captured within the indirect costs. We are only budgeting an increase of 0.29% in our overall indirect costs. Again, one of those charges is health insurance. It's only an increase of about $5,500. Why is that happening? I think it's, you know, the members, what planes are the members choosing? I know overall, there's like a 9% increase in health insurance, but we have many options that members can choose from, and some of those options that are higher increases, we don't have here, the members aren't choosing, so.
Sorry, the overall increase, you're estimating at 9%?
The city's estimating overall health insurance is going up about 9%.
Nine, it is 9%, okay. For some reason, I thought it was higher.
But within Smith Oak, the indirect costs that go back to the city, that include, you know, many things are included in the indirect costs, one of the costs is health insurance. But the overall indirect cost, again, is only a 0.29% increase in the budget, so that's good news.
Really?
All right, so I took the opportunity to go through the budget. This evening, I do not claim in, unless there's questions, specifically in the budget document that all of you have, which is this multi-page set of numbers, okay? I felt it was worthwhile to more of a narrative qualitative discussion to kind of show you some major impacts on the budget. And listening to the board over the last few months, I think there's been discussion around the difference between percent increases versus the dollar figure. So I wanted to highlight some high percent increases or decreases, and then the associated dollar figure, to show that there are some cost centers where there's a very high percent increase.
And you've got the trustees right on top there.
Figure, you're very important. I knew somebody was going to say that.
Tell the medical.
It's literally in order of the budget. And trustees are first in the budget.
Somebody's going to teach you your alphabet.
So I sort of took the exercise of looking at cost centers that had an increase or a decrease of 5% or more. And I had a couple I put in italics because they don't meet that threshold of 5% up or down.
We don't have anything to do with that trustee increase.
Oh, yes, trustees.
Just for the record.
That was city council.
City council, I am not doing that either. So no one hears.
But to take the first two that you see on the slide, I think is just a great case study. We can joke about it, but I think it's a great example. So yes, the trustees are going up 24% because of the stipends, but that's only a $13,000 increase in the budget.
Because there's only three of us, because the review don't...
Correct, correct. The teacher salary, now, this isn't strictly teacher salaries, this is the cost centers, the salaries, the longevity curriculum rating that we set aside, everything that's earmarked directly for academic and vocational instructors. This does not include other unit D numbers.
It doesn't include guidance counselors?
They're separate.
But it does include stipends?
That are associated with...
The people in that department.
Yes.
So...
Not coaches, not club advisory, that's separate.
No.
Andy has these listed by the cost center, that's why I do it in that order.
Gotcha. So you'll see, that's a 5.54% increase, which is not gigantic, but when you look at the dollar figure, because that's the vast majority of our staff here on campus, you're looking at a $258,000 increase. Substitutes, I just want to point out, you see, it looks like a big decrease, it's a $19,000 savings, so what's happening there, and I'll talk about it later, through attrition, we are not going to fill an educational associate position, which is, in layman's terms, sort of our permanent daily sub who comes in every day. We're not filling that position, we are increasing the daily sub rate, to hopefully have more daily subs available. By making that decision, we still see a savings of, again, approximately $19,000 in next year's budget.
But will there be coverage?
Yeah, so brace yourself, because it's very challenging to get subs.
Yes. I think right now, we've been struggling over the last several years trying to find the subs. Recently, we've had more luck, but yes, fingers crossed that won't.
So guidance counselors aren't part of the...
It's a separate cost.
What's it called, what is that?
Guidance social work, you'll see.
Okay.
Fair professionals, you see a large percent increase, $70,000 increase. The big attribute to this, there's a fair professional that we've been covering in one of our specialty grants, that specialty grant is no longer support, we moved it into the operating budget. So we're not adding staff necessarily, this is just moving it to the operating budget, there's an addition there. Instructional materials, I put in italics just because I want the board to realize that Joe and Crystal have done a lot of work to try to find money where possible. And in my career, instructional materials is typically a hot topic where, why can't we just cut instructional materials? It's an easy one, okay? We're not cutting staff or anything. I want people to see on the board, we're only projecting a 0.58% increase, that's a $1700 increase in instructional supplies. And I believe last month, I shared with the board, you know, when I sat in the department head meetings, especially on the vocational side, you go to Home Depot or Lowe's, you know that inflation has increased costs of copper and lumber and so on and so forth. And every meeting, meeting in and meeting out, we kept hearing 7% increase, 7% increase in materials. We're just not in a position to support all of that. So in essence, we are level funding instructional materials. And just as a reminder, I know all of you are well aware of the difference between level funded and level services. Level funding sounds like that's a fair thing, but in reality, if we level fund a line, specifically in instructional materials, we are not level servicing that for the other lines. Chances are, there will be less wire and less lumber in front of our students next year, because we'll have less money to go around. Same money, but it doesn't go as far.
How much do we spend on instructional materials? I should be able to do the math if it's...
We budgeted $294,440. We currently have expensed $207,029.
Thank you.
We have $49,144 in encumbrances, leaving $33,000 open currently. That was as of March 23rd.
When does that purchasing usually happen? Throughout the year or in a certain...
Throughout the year, correct.
And usually, January, February. I'm totally opposed to, my past life, we called it a budget freeze. I do not like that term, because as a vocational school, we can't freeze a budget, we still have a shop, you know, multiple shops to operate. So ordering has to recur. But what happens around January, February, we put a notice out to the staff, and now that we don't oversee the spending of the school, but we really go through with a fine-toothed comb, there really needs to be a true need to order something at that point, to try to realize some of the savings, which then allows us, and we've gotten into this pattern, which has been great, oftentimes in the springtime, we will be in a black hole, have money available, and oftentimes, that money available, we can begin to pre-purchase for the following year. So as an example, textbooks, we have to budget textbooks every year, but oftentimes, we're able to purchase some of those textbooks out of kind of the current fiscal year, which then frees up money for next fiscal year. So we try our best to be very, very cognizant in the springtime, to see if we can realize some savings, begin to pre-purchase, and then gives us more freedom next year. But again, my point is, instructional materials is not a whole lot to achieve, okay? Dues and memberships is, it looks like a major hit, it's about a $4,000 reduction, that is simply going through various dues and memberships for our staff that we're able to save on after this coming year. A lot of times, that's the cycle of various licensing and whatnot, it's just a year that we can have some savings. Guidance and social work, that cost center is an increase of 8.83%, it's a $27,000 increase, that's not new staff, that's just lane changes, longevity, so on and so forth. Athletics, again, I put it into italics, it does not meet my threshold of plus or minus 5%, but my career has always been athletics is a hot topic when it comes to budget, and you know, where do we cut? And as you can see, we are, we've already made some decisions within the athletic budget. You see it going down 1%, about a $3,000 savings. Making the decision, there was some hope that maybe we could offer a golf program, that's not going to happen. So, and there might be some savings in transportation, a little bit there as well. So again, the point is, there's not a whole lot there to cut, unless we start to cut programs. Student activities, there's an increase that is to continue to support APFA and skills, not necessarily increasing those two areas, but they're captured in that cost center. But along with, again, I give Joe a lot of credit with his leadership, looking at ways to increase the school climate here on campus, we've had more offerings around assemblies and programs and so on and so forth, all of that is within that particular category.
I really appreciate how you presented this, it's so easy to digest and understand the impact.
This next slide sort of became a new slide because we had so many, but it also works out with, this second slide is more of the facility side of the budget, for the most part, okay? And this is where, again, this is no fault to anybody, this is sort of just the cost of doing business nowadays, and doing business and then the holding campus. So custodial, you see a large increase, 16% increase, that's over $119,000. I'm going to get back to that in a little while, but a substantial part of that is cleaning service that we may continue, I'll talk more about that in a moment. Heating costs, we're projecting an increase of 38%, almost a 39% increase in heating costs this coming year, that's a $60,000 increase. Utilities, 17.74% increase, that's a $50,000 increase in utilities. Security is coming down, it looks like a large percentage, 20% decrease, that's only $3,000. And that is, again, thank you to the city, with the upgrades of the radio system, you know, to the fire department, citywide, we are anticipating an increase of some new radios coming here, and that will be a savings that we can realize within that particular budget. Maintenance of equipment is an increase, we just have, again, as a vocational school, a lot of equipment that the city has to oversee, making sure that we maintain, there's like an 11.5% increase against $6,000. External maintenance, again, 7% increase, this is like a $6,700 increase, I'll talk more about that. This is sort of our capital improvement plan, basically our internal capital improvement plan, where we've been able to fund projects, upgrades of faculty rooms, and painting, and other projects on campus that we've been able to do in-house. This is one line that we are now getting to the point where we may have to begin to cut back on some of those projects. And lastly, separation costs, this is just costs that we, as people leave, that we are responsible for.
Unemployment?
That's not unemployment.
Okay. Dr. Bonner, I don't know if you can say this off the top of your head, but those heating and utilities percentages, do those look, do ours look similar to the NPS or different?
In terms of the estimates?
Yeah.
Like heating, an almost 40% increase, utilities, a 5% increase. So those numbers, because of the way that we do our budgeting, they're about close to whatever, whatever was placed in our offsets for that particular, those margins. So, but this is an interesting thing, I don't know if this is something that both districts can work together to kind of lock in some of the utilities and some of the costs, like electricity for one.
We have been working on those contracts.
And that will be helpful.
Yeah, so we're trying to get better contracts. And I think you've had a conversation with Ben Isle, who is going to be our interim climate action director, and he mentioned to me that he was looking at buildings to see whether there's some potential.
Is that who you've been working with, Tim?
Yep.
Here's a presentation, I think, March 7th, May 7th, second.
And to answer an earlier question you asked about per pupil, so DASI's data is very stale, but for the fiscal year 2022, it was roughly about $18,000 dollars per pupil on the NPS side.
Just a side note, again, I don't want to jump to the Horticultural Building, but part of the conversation earlier today, working with the city, eventually having solar panels on it. And the initial thought process from the architects is that potentially, those solar panels will cover the cost of the electricity for that building, which will be 100% electrical. So while I'm fearful, as you see the utility cost going up, and now we're going to build an all-electric powered building, it's not going to be a good thing, but hopefully, long term, we'll see some savings there. So in summary, we have some decisions to make as a leadership team, I obviously will take any advice and recommendation, and priories from the board. At the end of that spreadsheet, you will see that we are $162,227 in to balance the budget. That's not where it was a few days ago.
Which spreadsheet, are we, this one?
If you, I'm still in this, I'm still in my slide presentation, but if you went through the actual budget, the... but if you went through the actual budget, the last page of the budget at the bottom shows a deficit of $162,000. So between now and April 9th, you know, as you begin to digest this presentation, as you begin to go through the budgeted numbers, if you have any priorities as a board, you again have line item authority. You do have the authority to tell the superintendent, I want you to reduce this particular line. We follow through on that. But just some talking points, okay, just kind of reviewing. I am not saying these are priorities necessarily, but just some ideas that we've been discussing. One, as you know, unfortunately, miscarriage retiring. Anytime a retirement occurs, it's an opportunity for us to look at that model. The model that I am looking at right now is that splitting the position may eventually be the same person, but you hire an individual who is the administrative assistant to the secretary, to the superintendent. And then you have a stipulated amount for the board of trustees secretary. And having that model split out, again, it could be the same person, but I believe at the end of the day, there could be a cost savings there. So I'm pursuing that. Also pursuing the, the posting and the hiring date for miscarriage replacement. Obviously, I want to ask for us over there, but it could be a cost savings there if I don't hire somebody effective by one, but maybe a little bit later. I do have miscarriage for a little while. So those are things that we have to sort of map out and calculate to see if we can have some savings there. External maintenance, I already mentioned, this is, we already cut it back. What you're looking at this evening is not what the initial number was. We looked at lockers. You've heard over the last seven months, we've been upgrading the lockers in all of the shops. The money that we have still earmarked in that particular line, we'll finish all of the shops except for one, and we may just have to wait another year for that one particular shop. And there's some other costs and needs we just have to cut back on. Athletics, I put it there just because it's always a hot topic. I want the board to realize, you know, there's not a whole lot there. Student activities, same conversation. That's sort of that cost center that Joe oversees as a principal for assemblies, programming, team leadership opportunities, obviously to support athletic skills. The cleaning company, this is what I really want to dive into for a moment. I already mentioned that overall custodial cost center was an increase of 16%. The dollar figure was an increase of $119,000. So you may say, Andy, how is that cost center going up $119,000? Yet that cleaning company's contract in and of itself is $134,000. There's some other savings we could have with that cost center, okay? It's a lot of money, okay? But that contract will allow us to have two individuals on campus in the evenings to clean. There is no health insurance benefits required in this particular contract. The hourly rate, if you really break it down for what that contract can provide us, it's, it's amazing. The amount of feedback that we've gotten from administrators and staff to say, wow, you know, we have a clean workspace, learning space. And again, that is no disservice to the custodial free that we have, okay? But this allows the limited custodial free that we have to focus on other areas. And we've had a lot of positive feedback from the cleaning company. Again, it's a high figure item, but in the whole scheme of things, I think it has a big benefit to this campus, but again, something that we may have to look at.
Andy, when is the last time you went out to bid for that?
So we just, we started with them last year. And we're using S3 funds right now. And it was under $100,000, so we got the three quotes. But they are looking to go in with any juicy concept.
So I, in my presentation, I'll open up to, again, just general comments to questions. I say other. Just to bring us back to, you know, building D. And I shared this with the staff, I've shared it with the board. $162,000 is a lot of money. I know that, okay? We have a lot of hard work to do between now and April 9th. But it's not a multimillion dollar deficit, okay? So I do recognize that we're going to close this now. But long-term, there is no way we can sustain this school every year moving forward without a $150,000, $160,000 shortfall every single year. I've lived that life in a former life, it's not fun. So...
I agree.
Which is why, again, I really want to push the board for conversations around D-building and/or around programming.
And/or around what?
Programming. So I'll be very blunt. We have, as you know, we have capacity within our vocational program. We have seats available. But we don't have enough seats on the academic side to bring more kids in above and beyond 600 to fill the shops. As you know from last month, if we truly filled all the shops, we would have 720 students on campus. If we had 720 students on campus, we'd have an additional $1.9 million in this particular budget. We would not be having this conversation today. So ideally, we would have the space for more academic classes. How do we find more space? Let's get a new D-building, okay? The flip side to the argument is maybe we can't build a new D-building, and perhaps we have to look at programming. And I've shared this, again, not advocating for necessarily. But 600 students really only supports 12 or so chapter 74 programs. We have 15. So again, is the discussion at some point having to be contracting a little bit, okay? And when you look at a particular program that has two instructors and has equipment and materials, and you're probably looking at, again, ballpark nothing to really set in stone, but plus or minus $200,000 per program. I just share that as a reference, okay? That's kind of what we're, we're entering that season now in the history of this school that we have to make those conversations, front door conversations.
Andy, if you were to eliminate a shop, let's just say hypothetically, so then those students who are in their junior or senior year, what would happen? What would the impact be for them not being able to complete their years?
So the Department of Ed would not really allow us to say, unless there's a safety issue, would not allow us to simply say, you're done with this particular program. There has to be a phase out. So it would be a four-year phase out, so next year we would not take any freshmen. We'd have our sophomores and seniors in it. Over the course of four years, phase it out.
The other thing we have is that we pay for the athletic students in regards to other high schools that have been charged, and we don't.
At that point.
But it draws the kids in here as far as coming to school here to participate in parents like it because it reduces the cost dynamic as well. Now, that's a cost for us internally, but we have to weigh, you know, if we had to cut an athletic program or whatever, we're going to be looking at this budget too to, you know, do what we have to do.
Another fear of closing programs, I agree with the athletic program. We talked about it with the leadership team. Ideally, if we were ever forced to close a program, I'm not advocating to close a program, I make that known. If we were forced to close a program, the question is, what program? And then the question is, if you close a program, ideally, those students would stay at some vocational. But would they stay at some vocational? So are we, are we thinking closing a program solves a problem? It doesn't necessarily solve a problem if we then lose the students. So that's, it's a very complicated conversation to have at some point, which again, let's find a way to increase it more, okay? I just keep going back to that. But that, only way that's going to happen is if we have temporary classrooms in some place and we begin the conversation around a D-building. Anyways, other thoughts?
So with athletics, if you move to a pay-for-play program, right away, you're going to knock out a cohort of students who are not going to be able to. And I mean, we're experiencing that in our MPS. I mean, there are the haves and have-nots. And so, and although we have a sliding scale that helps with free reduced lunch, there's still a significant cost for some students who may want to participate and cannot. So, I mean, you have to really think about that pay-for-play. I mean, it could be a partial pay-for-play if that was some way to go without losing your programs.
So definitely, the haves and have-nots is a real concern. On top of that, there's the notion, I think it's a fact, that some of our student athletes have never really been student athletes in the past. And when they come to the vocational school, we have this opportunity, it's worth them trying and getting involved and having that experience. And so not only the have and have-nots, it's the individual students who've never played before, we're giving them that opportunity. If we then apply an athletic fee, not only are we going to lose the have-nots, but we're going to lose the percentage of the population that never played before. So why pay, I've never played, it's not worth it. So I think we even lose more than just simply the have-nots. As far as the sliding scale, I recognize, again, former life, athletics was a hot topic. I had athletic fees, unfortunately. The school community asked me to increase athletic fees. I looked at sort of the sliding scale because I gave the argument as a runner myself. The cost of running is minimal compared to football, so why should there be a flat fee for the runners versus the throw-up players? So we had a, we looked at the cost per program, and we found a sliding scale that tried to be equitable. So that's an option.
What about raising tuition for non-resident students?
State.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
We could reduce the tuition where we can.
Always.
Dr. Lincoln Hooker, who will you be leaning on most heavily for counsel in thinking about where you might make some...
So we have a leadership team coming up. We'll have a few leadership teams, and it's going to be an opportunity for the administrator to oversee the risk assets to begin to really dive into and advocate.
I think there, people doing the work are the ones who have the best sense of what's absolutely essential and what could, you know, be unfortunate.
You're awesome.
I'm awesome.
Thank you. I'd like to hand a quick question for you.
Yep, thank you. Good evening again, everyone. I do want to say, just quickly, Dr. Bonner, Debbie was right. So it was Charles Shuchan from Howell Chaney Tech and Rich Shellman was from Oliver Woolcutt.
Oliver?
Yeah. So again, I want to do, highlight that we did have Reyna Diaz resign from the, as a student rep. Phoebe Perez from Electrical will be taking over. Current enrollment is 573. Admission season has closed, that ended on March 15th. All the way up through April 1st, we'll still be getting tuition forms. And our guidance counselors are beginning to get all the updated records. And then for those that are updated already, they've already begun scoring and going through the admissions policy. So all those applications will be processed and students ranked, and then notification letters will be mailed out just before April break. And then they'll also receive emails over April break, all with the next steps and packets. Trimester II closed on March 15th also, and we were going through that grade verification process, and we expect report cards to be digitally delivered on March 28th. We were lucky enough to hire a health technology instructor, Megan Legoy, who's coming out of Bay State Pediatrics, and she'll be starting on April 22nd. So that physician's been on the phone almost the entire year, through several rounds of postings and interviews and...
Right.
So it's a good one. Skills USA district results, I apologize, I didn't recalculate the numbers. But our, those represent our gold, silver, and bronze. The gold and silvers go to, onto the state competition as well as the student with the asterix. And our gold, just to read them out, is Keith Cable, Aaron Fine, Ariel Ginsburg, Julia Roy, Annalise Hazelcorn, Keegan Kachowski, and Dane Radwich. So congratulations to all those students. Any other questions? Let's bring forward for tonight.
Now, why would that one bronze student be able to go on?
Just the way that the, the competition worked out, that he got bumped up to the state competition.
Smaller field.
So, works out good.
Great.
It does happen, yeah.
Just, while I'm thinking of it, I want to put out there, reflecting on your presentation on the asterix was so rich and interesting. And the, if I'm understanding you, your aim to embed the vision of the graduate in the work of the school, so that, right, in everything that is done. And then looking at the report cards for trimester II, maybe think about this organization called Mastery Transcripts, which is just one example of things that are out there. They're based in Winchester. It's a digital portfolio that could be aligned with the characteristics of the vision of the graduate, that students would, once they, once they accomplish, you know, once they met standards for the different elements of the vision of the graduate or the core of the graduate, that they would get competency in that. And so that would be something, it's a way to, to bring that down to the student level, holding them accountable for demonstrating that they are becoming the graduate that we want them to be, and then also that they can share with employers upon graduation and say, not only do I have my transcript with these grades, but here is a graduate that Smith Oak wants to produce, and here's, here is all the evidence for the ways in which I've done it. I think it's just a cool, another way to, to really align with that process with fidelity and the vision of the graduate thing, you know, to say that, because I was really struck by that. You don't want it to sit on the shelf. You don't want all of this work to be just set aside. You want to keep it living.
Thank you. Policy, for committee report, Joe, anything?
Wait, you said policy subcommittee?
Policy, will you, by the way, the special office.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. All right. You already got a similar one. Okay, so the policy subcommittee met on March 15th. We reviewed Ms. Scants-Hobson's draft of an updated district policy regarding the maintenance of library materials. We expect to bring that policy to you for your review and a possible vote at the next board meeting. Dr. Lincoln Hooker asks that we review our policy regarding longevity benefits for employees to see if we'd like to change it or confirm that we'd like to keep it how it is. So your handout shows our current policy. Unit D, which is educators, unit H is administrators. Non-represented administrators negotiate these longevity benefits. Five years of service, $750, five to nine, 10 to 14 years of service, $2,000, and 15-plus years of service, $2,500. Non-represented support employees, so prepared professionals, vocational assistants, clerical workers, custodians, and farm techs are eligible for these city-determined longevity benefits. Five to nine years of service, $500, 10 to 14 years, $750, 15 to 19 years, $1,000, 20 to 24 years, $1,200, and 25 years plus, $1,500. There are some employees who feel that the longevity, longevity benefits should be the same for everyone, and there are others who feel that the higher benefits have been negotiated as a function of union membership. We think it might be informative to survey all employees anonymously to see which option is preferred. We could then look at that data and factor in, into the recommendation we would bring to the board in terms of a policy. And we'd like to know your thoughts about this idea. Surveying employees to see which is their preference of these two models. As, to give us more information, we felt like in the small group that we had discussing it, that wasn't enough. It's not something we have to do. We can discuss it here among all of you if you want. But putting out there that idea for some response from you. Surveying whether they would prefer the negotiated or the, I mean, the hazardous data? But we don't know for sure. And there might very well be, if I'm, you're implying that unit D is the biggest, you know, let's say, the folks who are part of the units with the higher longevity benefits would want to keep those and not have, but there are folks who would like to extend them to everybody. And so we, we might confirm that, and a, not a danger, but a risk in surveying is, it could, it could foster some lively discussion about the issue, which might not be healthy or might be very healthy. Or we're bringing it all to you. Not, not at all, but bringing this question to you, thoughts about surveying employees.
Is this something you wish to move on to, move on tonight?
I don't think we have to make a motion for it, but it's something that, yeah, we'd like, I'd like your feedback on it. Do you think it's a good idea? Do you think, would you caution against it? So it would be anonymous. Every employee would get one chance to respond, and it wouldn't be traced back to who they were. And then we would just look at the tally of the numbers.
Sure.
Yeah, we could ask them to identify... We'd, yeah, we could ask them to identify if, what, what they'd want to. We haven't gotten, we didn't get that far. But basically in our, in our policy subcommittee meeting, we've said, we need more information. We don't know enough about how the folks on campus feel about this.
I thought in the past we developed some type of longevity stipend. Has it been instituted or?
It's this right here.
Okay, so why are we changing it?
Dr. Lincoln Hooker, do you want to speak to that or would you like me to?
I bring it up because there was a board conversation about equity with longevity and...
When we made the policy, a year and a half ago?
Correct.
Yeah, it was, okay.
So that conversation at the board level has spilled over to the staff community here at the school. And unfortunately, I'll, I'll just speak for myself. As the superintendent, I have received countless arguments from both sides of the argument that Dr. Spencer Robinson has shared, that some people feel, this is my term, a year is a year is a year. Okay, so five years of service at Smith is five years of service at Smith. I don't care if you're a custodian, a teacher. Others feel the additional responsibilities that teachers have to deal with, that administrators have to deal with, that, that level of, of responsibility warrants the additional longevity. So there's a camp that says if you have the same longevity across the board with everybody, that's in essence a disservice for certain individuals. Because in my role, I'm getting the complaints from both ends. I felt that the board has to make a decision, one way or the other, to support the current model or to change the current model.
Which in theory we did, not theory, but in practice we did, but you're looking to, for us to equip you with really an emphasis, the authority to say, hey, the board has made it clear, we're gonna stick with what we've got or no, we're gonna change it.
Great, so before we instituted this stipend program, whatever you may wish to call it, we had nothing.
We talked it, so the...
But we had nothing before this?
No, that's not true.
Okay.
So these employees here, they're eligible for the city-determined benefits.
Okay.
These employees up here negotiate.
Yeah, through their union negotiations.
Better benefits. So when we talked about, when we discussed, we discussed longevity benefits a year and a half ago. Yeah, part of that discussion was should the, should everybody on campus, all the employees have the same longevity benefit? So we're revisiting it now because Dr. Lincoln Hooker is feeling like he's getting it...
He's been swamped with dissent amongst the ranks essentially.
Exactly. So, so what, what we're proposing is to get a feel, get a really clear sense of what the employees want to inform our thinking about what recommendation we would bring, the policy subcommittee would bring to you.
Okay, I'm on board with this, whatever you decide in terms of surveying.
You're on board with that?
I'm really not on board with that. I'm on board with this, but if you...
So you want to keep it the same and not, not change it and you don't need more data?
Agreed.
Okay.
But if you feel, for whatever reason, others, I will consent to that, but that's my consent.
And that is definitely an option that we can consider, is saying, right now at this meeting, no, we don't even need to revisit because this is what we...
Have we calculated the cost of increases?
How many employees are in here? We did, oh, we did.
Estimations.
Yeah. It's, if I'm remembering, for the, for the non-represented support employees, it was, I am so sorry, we've been working on budget. Yeah.
All right.
It's like, like $10,000 or $15,000, I think.
Okay, when I asked the question, did, we have something in place before this, you indicated, yes, we had something.
Before what?
Before we agreed on this a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
But it wasn't...
The top section was that.
Because longevity benefits have always been part of the negotiating process.
Okay, but it wasn't...
And yes, and city employees have always been eligible for longevity benefits.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
The bottom section was what you wanted surveyed.
No, I want...
No, it's all surveying.
I want, I, 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 I think, I think I want to talk more, I think I want to talk more. So when Dr. Lincoln Hooker has anecdotal evidence that there's dissent here, and so I would like to have more data that says, yeah, if there's a real division here or no, actually overwhelmingly people want this or that, we just don't know.
Well, I think, any other thing, just for discussion?
Yeah.
From the budget side of what we just heard in the last hour, I don't know if we could even afford it if you do get a survey that people want.
Another consideration.
Yeah.
So it would be in line with, let's keep everything how it is and not even, and not even revisit this.
Well, I think at this point, that's accurate.
Yeah, I agree. At this time, I would not, I would not revisit this. I think we did our due diligence previously and unfortunately there's dissent among the ranks and Dr. Andy Skinn, all sorts of complaints and, I don't think we could. My opinion is I don't suggest we move forward with this any further.
All right, curve.
Dr. Bonner, were you gonna say something?
Well, just to be mindful, with unit D and unit H, that was a contractual agreement. And so I'm assuming that in order for there to be equity, you would have to move everybody up to those standards. And that's, that's, that's a cost. That's a significant cost. So I, I don't know, I just, I feel that, you know, those are your professionals. There is, there's degrees that go attached to that and without them, I mean, everyone's essential, yes, but there should be some differentiation.
I agree.
Ma'am?
So here you say city determined, and so what that means is that this is what the city non-employees, yeah, not that the city's determining. So I didn't know a different way to say it.
Okay. I just want to clarify, I think that is, Mr. Quagio, what you're alluding to. So about a year and a half ago, that bottom half of your chart, those individuals were truly following the city amounts. Those amounts are not what the city employees are receiving. The board, you voted to increase what they had to the...
I thought we were doing better.
That's why I asked you earlier today that question and that's not what you told me.
All right.
You said it was the city, because I couldn't remember that. Okay.
I think you, you advocated for increasing and we voted on increasing and I assume these are the amounts we agreed upon, so I'm...
I think I advocated for everybody getting the same.
Okay, all right. I stand corrected.
But in, in any case, you're saying we agreed to increase that, which I couldn't remember, which I asked for.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. All right. Again, back, go ahead.
Back to you.
Oh, so I mean, I, I can't advocate for saying that's different than the, the city's non-representable.
Which are, I guess it are the use.
So I can't advocate for it.
Were you a part of that board or not? I can't remember.
I think I was, but I'm...
Oh, yeah, you, you had to have done, yeah, but it wasn't Dr. Bonner.
Yeah, she wasn't here.
All right.
She didn't hear it enough.
I, Dr. Lincoln Hooker, I want to check in with you because you're the one who asked for us to revisit this. So what, what would you like to see happen now?
What I'm hearing is some level of agreement within the board that what we currently have, we want to support as a board. And that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a direction from the board that I can implement. So if the decision is we want to keep status quo, status quo, I can easily support that. That's my argument.
And is that something that we were, I was, we were planning on bringing this to a vote tonight, but certainly someone could make the motion if they wanted to. Do you feel like that is necessary?
Well, I think this is a direction where I would recommend that back within the policy subcommittee, that if there's any policy drafted, we can just put that in.
So put into words what has been discussed here and bring it to the board for a recommendation. Okay.
So will.
So is there, I guess, I feel like I have clarity from these three board members, but I don't have clarity from you about what you would like to see in that policy or are you just not feeling like you don't want to?
I think it's whatever you agree on as a policy subcommittee.
Okay. All right, so then we will, we'll bring a draft of a policy to the next board meeting to be voted on.
Sounds good.
And that'll be part of the policy manual and...
Exactly. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Helen's report.
Yep. Just update on...
I didn't know if you were asleep.
No, no, my God, it's in key.
Ring the bell, waste of time.
Update on the companion animal building, a little bit more rough plumbing and electrical will be done, but they're pretty much close to finishing that up. Electrical kids are getting ready, maybe pull a new fiber optic from A building down there to increase the speed and connect that building. Allegedly the windows left the factory last week. They got the big storefront window in on the south side.
Who's doing the windows again?
Lazard.
Lazard, okay.
And now we're gonna go out for open bids, hopefully in a couple of weeks, on insulating, closed cell, and doing the drywall. We're gonna pop, put that one out to bid.
That's so exciting.
A question on the fiber optic?
Yep.
That I'm guessing is underground?
Yep.
And so where's that being originated from?
Server room here goes out, goes over to D building, goes to the corner of B, goes the other corner of B, goes into forestry building, E building. That's where Josh wants it terminated. We'll come out of there and go into the companion animal building.
And you're using a raceway that are conduit that already has stuff in it or you have a spare?
We dug up that road right on the backside last summer or last fall.
So you have a dedicated...
We got conduit in the ground, some pull boxes down by the building.
A dedicated conduit or this?
Yep, there's two, there's a line for power, there's a box for power, there's a box for data and, and Josh's line. So, so that we'll get that going. As soon as the asphalt plan's opened back up, maybe mid-April, and I can schedule this. I talked to a couple of shops about having kids repair the road down there. So we can get that done, get those bumps out of there. The sewer project, we're still waiting for some middles to go back to the engineers so we can get the manholes in. We bought all the block to the kids to build the retaining wall. So as soon as sewer line gets put in, then the forestry kids can build their retaining wall. I think on that building, pretty much set up, I think that's it.
So exciting. When do you think the community animal building will be all done?
I think they can walk in there in September.
In September.
It is in September.
And will there be like a ribbon cutting ceremony or some kind of...
It's not my scope of work. I think that's our scope of work too.
There should be, to celebrate, like, so all, all of this work was done by Mule?
Yeah, the shots.
All in-house. I mean, that's phenomenal.
Well, we hired, we hired, by many, we hired, we had a full-time carpenter, a full carpenter.
Such an incredible accomplishment and should be celebrated.
So why don't you put that on our agenda?
You're on the agenda committee.
Oh, you're right.
Mr. Quagio, would you please put that on?
So for this summer coming up, we're gonna do what we did in culinary, so the cafeteria kitchen, where we're gonna kind of blow up the ceiling and have Kevin come back and try to figure out how to put it all back together.
Okay, good, you did it before.
Tim, for information, this heavy storm we had this last weekend, how did it end up down, affecting down by the road?
I, I didn't really see it. I was, I didn't come in on Sunday to see what it had done. I was kind of looking at the, the marker poles that the engineering company had put in, so that's what we'll just watch, see how it, the bank kind of falls away.
Well, I happened to go by it later in the day and I looked down there, went up the floors and you could see the overflow coming across the pasture towards the main, I'm guessing. I've never walked down there, I should at some point, but it didn't really scour the pasture at all.
No, I, I would think that, that, you know, that grass is gonna hold it, but it does when it goes over the bank, that's what our concern has always been.
Over the bank at the...
Into the stream.
At the mitigation?
At the bottom of the pasture.
At the bottom?
That's where the stream bank is. My concern's always been that, that stream that keeps eroding towards our pasture line, we've moved the fence line a couple of times, so.
So we've had some significant storms since that's been installed. Have you seen any?
I haven't walked down there, no, but that's, Ty Bond is monitoring that for two years.
So they're on the hook to monitor that?
Yes.
Paid them to? And you would, you get a monthly report or a quarterly report?
I would think a monthly, I think I'd wait a year and then I'd, you know, talk to Donna or I could just walk down there, but I'm not sure how close to the bank they put them.
Well, maybe if you can find some time, that'd be great.
Brutal miss.
On your list.
Yeah.
By a lot.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Sure. Morgan Records currently has all of the board of trustees minutes and are in the process of doing a test scan. They did have a contract manager that I work with directly, so they sent over a test. I looked at it right now and now we're scheduling a meeting so we can go over that so they can begin the process. Based on what we send over, I'm happy to report what the, the original estimate was 2,400, it's gonna be less, so.
And so they can all be on our website now?
So, yes, and they'll be, they'll be able to escape their word in and search and that was one of, losing our historian, that is the...
That was a...
Because you say, you would say Deb, hey, can you look at this or can you research this and she finds it like that. We, you know, we don't have that history.
We're all researchful, just ask, yeah. Who is responsible for making sure they get on the website?
So, I'm not sure. So it's gonna come back, an external hard drive and we'll be handing it to Josh.
Okay.
And we'll work with Josh and Andy to find out.
It's exciting.
Yes, it really is. The White House basement is, has been cleaned and is ready for the contractors. It looks amazing down there. Unfortunately, the city HR director is still waiting to hear from unemployment on the appeal that this evening mentioned. He's still having to see, um, an appeal process.
That's the good coaches, right?
Yes. Munis Accounting System. So last week when I was running my board reports, I noticed some errors in the encumbrances. And we're the only department in the city that uses the encumbrances for payroll. So Rafael is aware of it. I was working with Munis, Tyler. What they wanted us to do is wait until this payroll has been processed. We'll ask them to refresh the test or training database and Anne Marie and I will work on that to try to, with Tyler, to try to resolve the issue. They had no idea. So I had to hand go in and fix them for the report.
Oh, wow.
GIC health plan rates. The employee portion is included in my, the last page in my packet. With that, the third and final tuition was sent out on March 22nd. We're waiting for the special ed invoices to come from the Director of Student Services office and going to be emailed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under new business, may I have a motion, a second, to approve an out-of-state field trip to Oak Ridge Dairy Farm in Connecticut, May 16th, 2024, for animal science students?
So moved.
Second.
Can you put a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion, a second, to approve an out-of-state field trip to On Target Miniatures West Subfield, Connecticut? Men may date to be determined for animal science students?
So moved.
Second.
Is it, those are, those are, are they different animal science students?
I have to confirm that.
Because if they're both going to Connecticut, can't they go on the same day? Like, is that, is that part of, is that one field trip to two places?
Well, the second date hasn't been locked in yet.
Right, I see that, but I'm wondering if they're both, if they're animal science students, then they must be different grades or a different...
Yeah, that's a good point.
Am I sure where Oak Ridge Dairy Farm, Connecticut is, it may not be near West Subfield.
Well, if you want, we can withdraw that one and just hold it until we get it...
Go ahead. So moved, why would you, Harvey?
Yep.
Okay, so any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion, a second, to approve the 2024, 25, 24, 25... May I have a motion, the second, to approve the 2024, 25, 24, 25 school year calendar?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any significant changes?
I just, I want to be transparent that what you are about to vote on is technically is not aligned with the Unit D contract. We've been doing MOU over the last several years. We had a faculty presentation, Unit D did a vote, and quite honestly, it was overwhelmingly in favor of what you see in front of you.
Okay.
So it's going, kind of aligning with what we've been doing over the last couple of years. But when you look at the dates on the calendar, it appears to be earlier. But when you look at the flow in reference to Labor Day, it's the same. So your vote is technically approving MOU as well. But administrators in Unit D are in favor of what you see.
All right. This is what you're presenting to us, and you've already discussed it amongst the ranks. So I'm good.
As a board, you have authority over the start date.
Okay.
Of the school year. So that's what you're voting on. I just wanted you to be aware that the faculty had a vote because it is technically against the contract. They were in agreement.
Could be problematic, potentially. Theoretically, just saying, hypothetically.
Good, exactly.
Not practically. Why are there question marks after the shop days?
So.
Where does it? Under top right, under picture days, shop days?
Because we don't have the dates set.
Sorry.
Those dates aren't scheduled.
I do want to just make a note again, the faculty was aware.
When you come home.
December 23rd is a Monday. That technically, according to the holiday calendar or whatnot, that would be a school day.
Which day?
Monday, December 23rd.
Okay. Yep.
I made the executive decision to propose that we have that as a non-school day. We would have a very low school attendance if we had school on that Monday, and then the students were off the rest of the week. So what you're seeing here is Monday, the 23rd, even though it's not an official holiday, that would be a non-school day. We've done a similar thing with the day before Thanksgiving, which was always a long time of the half a day. We've made that a non-school day as well. So that's just another side note.
That'd be a nice break.
I think it makes sense.
Absolutely.
So good question. You set your high school, the graduation date.
Yes.
So are you in compliance with the 12-day?
So, yes. As long as graduation is no more than 12 days from the end of the scheduled last day of school, when the calendar is approved, we are okay.
I asked that because MPS was out of compliance, I believe, last.
Oh.
And so it was brought to my attention this year.
Okay.
Okay. Moving forward, may I have a motion, the second?
I think we have to vote on it.
Yeah.
On the calendar?
We motioned, we seconded, we had discussion.
Now we're just waiting for the vote.
All in favor?
All in favor?
All in favor? Oh, yeah. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion, the second, to approve proprietary products for the Horticulture Building Project? That is what Andy talked about earlier in regards to, if you want to review it.
I'm going to get a motion, the second.
Okay. Yep. May I have a motion, the second?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes?
Just to give the board a quick synopsis of what you see in this letter from SMMA. So as you know, procurement laws, if you want to buy any piece of equipment or anything, it's like a bid and whatnot. But we are allowed through proprietary regulations also, basically, if there's a particular specific item that we want and we can justify, we are allowed to sort of bypass some of the general bidding processes. So what you see here are six items that we agree we want to go through the proprietary regulations. One is the door hardware, and that is simply to align with the existing door hardware that we have on campus. It makes sense just to use the same vendor, the same contractor.
Especially with the investment we've made in security systems.
Yeah. Everything here is.
Exterior windows, the same thing. The wood fiber, I just wanted to point out, the wood fiber insulation, this is a result of the 1.2 million in the state. They specifically wanted this specific insulation, which is why you see it there. Otherwise, all the other items that you see are because it's what we already have here on campus. So, but we need to have a formal motion unvoiced by the board so we can report on that when the bidding occurs.
So we've had discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item, may I have a motion, the second, to approve a school-based health center member understanding?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a draft MOU. I would be the one to sign it, along with the Hilltown Health Network. I just wanted the board to be aware that.
Well, that should be MOU, not MOA, right?
It's a change.
Member understanding, her agreement?
Okay. Thank you. So just for your comfort level, this particular MOA was the draft point. This is the, started as the MOA that Gateway uses with its Hilltown Health Network. We reviewed it internally. I shared it with our legal counsel. They reviewed it as an input, so what you see here has all of our stakeholders already given feedback. I just wanted the board to have an opportunity to see it. I will then proceed if it's approved. I will proceed to finalize it. We'll have services probably within the next few days.
Super exciting, but I haven't had a chance to read this yet. Is this what we got today or yesterday? Or did we have?
This was.
Yesterday. Yesterday. Yeah.
Do we need to move on this right here today? Ideally?
So can I share with you if you're concerned very quickly, and I know Andy will speak to this? So this is a typical agreement that an outside service coming in to provide a school-based health center would use. And it has all the specifications in terms of location space, the partnership of what the school's responsible for doing, and that they're responsible for doing. It also lists the different aspects of the health that they will be providing. So it was nice to see the behavioral health, the psych health.
So you've re.
I read it.
Okay.
But I also familiar with the.
You're familiar with the whole process?
Yeah.
Absolute trust, Andy. Actually, I started turning, for you to have your perspective also.
So that he can move forward. We've been sitting on this for a while.
It's been a process. So we have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion, the second, for discussion with possible action of a vote to approve the FY 24 Student Opportunity Act Plan?
So moved. Second.
So discussion, I could make it easier for you reading. It's not probably easy reading, but I took from the JEMs website, I turned it into a narrative so it was easier for the board to read through. But a quick synopsis, the SOA is the Student Opportunity Act. It's the legislators' attempt to increase chapter 70 money, but it's attached to making sure that we're focusing on certain subgroups that are falling behind to make sure we target them and make sure, you know, accelerate them. That's the synopsis of what the Student Opportunity Act is all about. As you now know, chapter 70 money is flatlined here. It's a frustration I have had with this particular Student Opportunity Act over the last two cycles. The amount of money used to draft this is more than we're getting, which is, as you saw, flatlined. But with that said, I'll get off my soapbox. Part of the regulations is a school committee has to vote, and it has to be submitted by April 1st. So there is a deadline. We have to look at the data. We reviewed all the data. Our students with disabilities is the subgroup that sort of sticks out, you know, with all the data points that the department that wants to submit out. So we've identified students with disabilities as our subgroup. As far as the response, the program that we're looking at, because I did not want a heavy lift for our team, we did look at the school-based health center as sort of the program. So even though that's not a direct cost for us.
That is smart.
There's some indirect costs, such as technology. So, you know, in the interim, we're going to have some telehealth services that we need to provide a computer. So let's roll that in. And my argument is, as we have the health center up and running, our student attendance will improve because students will not be missing this much school. Having that intense therapy on campus hopefully will provide the safety nets for our students so they can hopefully pay attention more and achieve more within classrooms and the shops. In addition, there is another cost, thank you to the administrative team, there's an online curriculum that we have begun to purchase that we use within the assistant principals, within our ISS behavioralist, working with students, their specific lessons that they can go through all online to learn about some better strategies on interpersonal skills, relationship issues. So there's a cost there that I'm willing to, this particular plan. You can read it, I'm giving you the Cliff Notes version. It's not a huge new program that we're creating. I'm just trying to make it as streamlined as possible, satisfy the regulations, and make sure that we're not doing a lot of work without it. That's my two cents.
First.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
May I have a motion, the second, to approve the following surplus from automotive for resale? An electronic fuel injector tester, a 1999 GMC Jimmy vehicle, 1999 Ford Crown Victoria place and receptor vehicle, an OTC scan tool, and a Euro scan tool software kit?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion, the second, to approve the following surplus from automotive for scrap? A 2013 Ford Explorer vehicle, 2004 Ford Focus wide-end vehicle, 2000 GMC 3500 vehicle, 1999 Ford Escort vehicle, 1988 GMC 1500 vehicle?
So moved.
Second.
All in, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. As far as the budget presentation, I know that Andy reviewed it, but we're not making any.
We're not making action on it.
There'd be no action. So we have to vote on it or not? Because there's no action.
No action.
So, future business, April 9th, regular board trustees meeting here in the library at 5:00, May 21st.
Hold on, hold on. I have a little issue with that. I had a previous engagement, I think was in the book before this. This is, April 9th got switched along the way, wasn't it, later? And I made a commitment for something else, and I'm obviously in a quandary because it's the budget. Is there any opportunity this gets shifted?
Really can't get shifted later because we don't need this dialogue.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. It came to it earlier.
It gets, that's next week. Rich?
Any chance we do this? I don't, hold on. What was the only chance to be made here? So you could, could we do it Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday of the first week of April?
I think it's very hard for.
I don't.
That's, that, I'm busy that first week, the whole first week.
And Dr. Lincoln, he has to possibly his team and get.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, okay, okay. It's unfortunate, so I will figure it out.
And then the next one, May 21st, 24 regular board meeting, 5 o'clock, up here at the library. This is a change, recommend a change, the June 18th regular board meeting to June 11th. So that everybody's aware of that.
Hold on, hold on.
That's a change to June 11?
Yes.
The rationale behind that, the context, June 18th is our last scheduled school day. It may be difficult to have a board meeting that even in the past, we bumped it, this has happened in the past, in the past, we bumped to the following week. The following week is a state conference, I think, people, myself included, attend. So I think that moving it to the 11th would make the board, in most sense.
And you don't want to have a board meeting on the last day of school? So is that request coming from you?
That's the crux of the discussion.
Oh, that's fine. But I don't know if we need to add this. Also, April 9th, we're going to have our building committee meeting also.
During the day, right?
At 3:00, which I didn't make. It's this, okay.
Okay. So Dr. Bonner, your job?
Okay. Are we moving the meeting as you need? Have we moved it?
We're only moving the June 11th.
So it's from the 18th to the 11th.
So we moved it.
Very quick question. Is there any follow-up on the field trip to Inland? After that great presentation?
Yes. Yeah. It's so, they're moving forward. So popular that they are now looking at, they're taking deposits to fill a second bus while they're.
Because we never really voted on it, so we need to make sure that that's added to the agenda.
Thank you for bringing that up.
So now.
So now.
I make a motion. Will that be adjourned?
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.